Everyone should be in now.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order at 6:00 PM. In accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code, Ordinances, Chapter 7-1.4, the Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening on August 7th, 2024, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearings will be followed by our regular meeting. And in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online to ensure the public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff please identify themselves?
Elena Itamarri with the Environment Department.
DeeDee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll call the role of Commissioners present. Commissioner Sullivan.
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Laney.
Jamie Laney.
Commissioner Wilson.
Mike Wilson.
Commissioner Conan.
Conan Tirovengadum.
Commissioner Richmond. She might be on mute, but I believe she's here. Commissioner Herbst.
Anne Herbst.
Great, thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda tonight is a notice of intent for DEP File Number 0061999 and Boston File Number 2024-022 from VHB on behalf of Parcel 3 Owner LLC for the proposed construction of a new building located at 232 A Street in South Boston. Resource areas are land subject to coastal storm flowage, 20-foot, 25-foot waterfront area, and 100-foot buffer to coastal bank. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Kruhl from VHB, and I'm here on behalf of Parcel 3 Owner LLC. I'm joined by the applicant Lauren Ferrando and by my colleague John Moser from VHB.
Great. Stephanie, before we get going, just a quick question on the part of your NOI, the construction of the berm. Was that required during your Article 80 process?
To include the berm?
Yes.
Yes, it is. And it was also part of the MEPA review process.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, yours all yours.
Great. Thank you Commissioners for hearing this tonight. This is the 232 A Street Notice of Intent. Next slide, please. So this is the agenda that I'm going to run through on the slideshow. Site location, existing conditions. I'll identify the resource areas, describe the project. I'm going to spend more time than usual on climate resiliency because it does involve that berm, and I want to make sure that's clear. And then we'll talk about the work involved, the mitigation measures, and the regulatory compliance. Next slide. The project site includes 2.6 acres of land at... The project site is 230, 2-point, sorry, 2.38 acres of land at 232 A Street, plus 0.29 acres of land at 20 Gillette Park. So the total is 2.67 acres. Gillette Park is the adjacent property, and I'll describe the work that's happening there. Under existing conditions, the site is majority paved. It's used for parking and truck access. It also includes a portion of the Harbor Walk and South Bay Harbor Trail. It includes 2.5 acres of a park called Binford Street Park. There are currently no stormwater BMPs on the site. Next slide, please. So on the site, out of the 2.3 acres, 2.04 acres is impervious. It's primarily asphalt pavement. This is all man-made filled tidlins. There are no natural conditions on the site. Next slide, please. One more slide. Sorry, I think one got skipped, the resource areas. If you could go back one. There we go. So the site contains almost 102,000 square feet of land subject to coastal storm flowage, and that's the land that's below elevation 10 NAVD 88, which is the base flood elevation that is shown on the applicable FEMA firm. There's also the 25-foot waterfront area. On the site, there's approximately 165 linear feet of coastal bank, and then there's the buffer to coastal bank as well. As you can see, Binford Park is outside of LSCSF, along with a small portion of the parking lot. Next slide, please. Oops, other direction.
Hey Stephanie, I'm not too sure what's going on with the slides here, but I think this is the order that we received them in.
Keep on going. It should be slide six that we're on. There we go. Thank you.
Sure.
So the project is the construction of one single building. It's a laboratory R&amp;D building with office and two levels of below-grade parking. It includes improvements and expansion of the publicly accessible open space. It's about five times more publicly accessible open space than exists today. It also includes improvements to the Harbor Walk and the South Bay Harbor Trail, an extension of a city street, which is Neco Street here going through the site, as well as new sidewalks and streetscapes on Neco, Binford, and A Street. The project will result in an increase in pervious area of 189%. The stormwater system is designed to retain the first 1.25 inches of stormwater over the site impervious area to the maximum extent practicable. And then finally, the project also includes relocation of a 72-inch drain CSO pipe that is owned by BWSC to avoid the building footprint. Currently, the pipe is located underneath where the building is proposed, and a portion of that pipe will be relocated outside of the footprint on the 20 Gillette Park property, which is immediately planned south here. Next slide. So as far as climate resiliency, the project has been designed to reduce peak runoff rates and volumes. It's compliant with the green infrastructure requirements of the city's smart utility policy. Regarding extreme heat, it'll provide a publicly accessible open space. It'll include shady gathering places. The building itself will be energy efficient with climate-controlled interior spaces on the ground floor that will be accessible to the public. Next slide, please. So to understand the site's vulnerability to the impacts of flooding in particular, we ran the Resilient Massachusetts Action Team Climate Resilience Design Standards Tool, which is known as the RMAT tool. And we found a lot of the data that you see here in this table, including the mean higher high water for 2050 and 2070, as well as the 2070 highest astronomical tide, the 2030.2% annual chance event water surface elevation, also base flood elevations and water surface elevations for 2050, 2070. And then we also looked at the 0.2% annual chance event for wave action and water surface as well, which is what the RMAT spit out as the event that we should be looking at here. We are including a portion of the Resilient Four Point Channel Infrastructure Project. This is the project that is being spearheaded by the BT, BP... Not the BPD, the Boston Planning Department, or just the planning department. And they are in the process of securing a $10 million grant from FEMA. That project has also gone through MEPA separately, but it involves creating infrastructure on private property, including this site, the adjacent site at 244 to 248 A Street, and the Gillette site at 20 Gillette Park. So the Resilient Four Point Channel Infrastructure Project requires a line of protection at elevation 21.1. The elevation on the site, it's going to go a little bit higher. We're designing our site to go to 21.5. And those numbers, sorry, are in BCB, just to be confusing. But the current project is looking at elevation 15 NAVD 88. The project is also subject to Article 25A, the Coastal Flood Resilience Overlay District. That requires a sea level rise, design flood elevation of 14 NAVD 88, and we're actually going up to 15 NAVD 88 for the project, and that is the first floor elevation. And then on the next slide.
Stephanie, could I just ask you quickly, just to be clear, SLR DFE, that's a 2070 number? 14? Yeah, thank you.
So this slide shows site elevations and cross-section. It shows the elevation of the current flood plain, the Harbor Walk, which is, it will actually cut diagonally across the site, the line of protection, and the first floor elevation. They seem like extremely different numbers, but because they're over this very long site, it's a pretty subtle gradation. Next slide. DEP did provide some comments on the NOI portal, and I just wanted to make sure that we addressed them during this hearing. The first one was talking about that there is a difference in the amount of LSCSF reported out in the NOI and the MEPA document. And I just wanted to point out that the MEPA document did not include the off-site area for the BWSC sewer pipe relocation, and so that is what creates the difference in that square footage. They also had a question about how we did our flow path analysis, and they stated that clarification is needed to explain how a publication for stream restoration would be applied for evaluating if a building, if building a flood berm and filling a coastal flood plain would increase velocity rates. We use the National Engineering Handbook, Part 654, Stream Restoration Design. As part of this process, it wasn't used to evaluate whether the berm would result in an increase in velocity. It was used as part of this multi-step process to evaluate whether any increase in velocity rates would negatively impact adjacent properties. So first, we performed the hydraulic and hydrologic and hydraulic or H&amp;H modeling to determine the flood flow velocities of the storm surge events in the pre-development and post-development conditions under the, under current and future storm events. So there were a number of different iterations here. Then we used that publication, the National Engineering Handbook, to evaluate if those velocities and the post-development condition would actually cause erosion or scour. And we use that because it provides allowable velocities in a, in a channel. Those are the velocities that can be sustained without scour for a variety of materials. And one of the materials they have is hard surfaces. It's, it's hard rock. So it's appropriate for this situation because water is channelized over a hard surface. That, the table in that publication is actually derived from an Army Corps set of criteria for non-scouring flood control channels. And we concluded that the flow velocities in the post-development condition would actually be less than the allowable velocities in that handbook. The handbook says hard surfaces can allow, can tolerate 20 feet per second, and our modeling showed that the highest that we would, that the project, the highest velocities of flooding that the project would cause in a one specific instance to the off-site location was nine. So it would not be expected to cause any damage, including scour or erosion to the built environment. And I know that's, might be slightly out of context for, for this filing, but I did want to make sure that I address that in case there are folks from DEP on the call. Okay, next slide, please. So the work will take place in about six phases. We'll start with site preparation and excavation, then utility and foundation installation. After that's done, then vertical construction will begin. Then the exterior facade will be installed, and the interior will be fit out. After that will come the hardscaping and landscaping, and that will result in final conditions. Next slide. So the project is subject to, or will have obtained a Nipte's Construction General Permit, and it will produce a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program, a SWIP, that we will comply with. The catch basins will all be protected with silt sacks. The construction site will be protected with a construction fence with geotextile fabric and a straw waddle. There will be vehicular gates with wheelwash stations for construction traffic to use. And then there'll be a suite of non-structural practices, including mechanical street sweeping, wetting agents on areas of exposed soil, covered trucks, and monitoring of actual construction practices. Next slide. So there's actually no work on the coastal bank. It is on the site, but we will not be touching it. There won't be any new structures or new impervious areas proposed within 100 feet of the coastal bank. There'll be existing impervious, and then there'll be new pervious areas. For LSCSF, this project meets the requirements to be considered a redevelopment. So it will result in an improvement over existing conditions of the capacity of LSCSF to protect multiple resource area values, including that it'll prevent current flooding and storm damage. It includes adaptations and mitigation against the impact of sea level rise through implementation of the city's berm that'll protect the site and the upland area from flooding through 2070. Stormwater management will be provided according to the performance standards established under the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards, and that's indicated in the NOI filing. And then not only will it not inhibit the planned flood resilience, it'll actually fully integrate that into the project. For the waterfront area, there are no performance standards, but we do understand that the commission is interested in seeing maintaining vegetation and providing public access, both of which will be done at the project site. And that is all I have, and I'm happy to take questions.
Great, thank you. Could you just spend one minute on the stormwater management? I noticed that you mentioned injection wells, and I think you have constraints because of the tunnel. I think that's the issue. Could you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. Actually, my colleague Howard Moujer has also joined, and so I will pass it over to him.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, Stephanie. And I'm not going to punt, but John Moser, my other colleague, is, is here, and he might have the plans available to review them. So sorry for the handoff.
Problem. Good evening. I have John Moser with VHB, the civil engineer on the project. To answer the question on the injection wells, so the concept of the stormwater management plan is to collect stormwater within the building footprint and send that to tanks within the building. As you mentioned, we are constrained by the Mast dot tunnel underneath the majority of the site. So the injection wells will be, you know, infiltrating water to the best of our abilities on that side of the site. And then within the remaining parcel of the site, we'll be collecting stormwater and sending them through water quality units to treat suspended solids, and then that would be direct towards BWSC infrastructure. As Howard mentioned, I do have plans if there are any interest in looking at those.
Yeah, I don't think we have the capability to do now, but they're included in the NOI, I assume. Okay, great. Thank you. Just two quick housekeeping matters here. Just want to note that Commissioner Richmond joined us at 6:09, so she is present. And also, before we go to Commissioners, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. You know, for this one, I think I'd like to start with Commissioner Herbst, because we had, I think we have a lot of questions collectively about the berm, so if you don't mind.
Okay, sure. My first question is just trying to understand whether you are proposing to build the berm only that section on its own.
Sure. So the, the way the berm is going to work is that every property will be responsible for having the berm built on it. So for example, 244 to 248 A Street has, is building the portion that's on their property. We will be building the portion that is on, on our property. It's, we're still kind of working through some of the details with the planning department because it all comes down to timing about whether they are actually going to be doing construction or even final design. The, if, if they are ready first, they will build the berm, the core of the berm, and then the project will come and kind of do the grading and the rest of the project. If they are not ready and our project goes first, we will construct the whole thing at the, at the proponent's expense. It appears that, that the planning department will be using their grant if it's not used entirely, or if it, and no portion is used on this project site, all of it will be used on the Gillette site.
So I asked because I, I under, I think I have an understanding of the full project and don't have concerns about that, but do have concerns about a piece being built and what kind of impact that would have. And, but a very basic question is, I just found this, your package really difficult to understand. I don't actually see any detail on the berm of what it's made out of. When you, in your work description, it doesn't say anything about building the berm. And I, did I, I mean, unless I really missed something, I don't think there's anything there.
So it's not entirely designed yet, the, the core of the berm, because it's actually the city's responsibility to design it, and they have hired a consultant to do that work. We are committed to incorporating whatever their design ends up being, unless it's a case of they didn't get anywhere. I mean, they have a preliminary design, and it would be a clay berm, but we don't have the details of it. So it's been very frustrating for us because it is lagging, and yet we're required to incorporate it.
So are you, but, but you, you see what that does for us? Are you asking us to approve a berm that we have no idea what it is?
So the berm, so we are asking you to approve a project that incorporates the flood control berm that will meet FEMA standards, and we're proposing the final grading. So that will be the grading within the, within the resource area. The city itself has filed with MEPA already for the berm as far as environmental review. So we, we are including the berm, but we're not like, what's, we're not, we did not show what is below grade because that part hasn't designed yet, been designed yet. And you know, John Howard, feel free to jump in because I know this is kind of a tricky topic, or Lauren.
Well, let me just ask, if, if we were to just approve what you gave us, would you, would you think you have permission to build a berm, and that's that? You're good to go?
Yeah, I can jump in here.
Oh, go ahead, Lauren.
There, when we talk about the berm, right, there's essentially two different berms. There's the berm that is intended to be the backstop that the city's designed and that the FEMA grant money that the city's applied for is predicated upon. And then there is our site plan. And what our site plan seeks to do is take the berm one step further. So it's not just an earthen berm as the city, you know, envisioned for this parcel. It'll be a more holistic approach where we are raising the grade of the entire site and then incorporating, you know, different terraces into our landscape design. And I'll certainly let the experts speak to that and what's in our site plan. And if it's just a matter of us better explaining what is in our, our plan, we're of course happy to do so. But do you want to just make sure we're making that distinction? It's not like we just took the, the city's, you know, proposed plan, the four-point channel, or resilient four-point channel infrastructure project and slapped it on our site. It is a different plan, and what we're applying for is to be able to build, you know, that more holistic approach where we're including grading, et cetera.
And DeeDee, if maybe you could bring up the slide with, with the project description on it. It has the plan view of the, with the landscape plan. The one, keep going back. Yeah, that one. So, so this is the plan, and the berm is incorporated into this plan.
So I can tell you, I absolutely can't visualize this. I can't tell where the berm is on this. I just...
Yeah, so if you, so because it's not specifically visible, it's part of the grading. So it's not like there's a location where there is a berm, and you'll be able to say, there's the berm. It's integrated into the, into the plan. And so if, Elena, if you could go forward three, or DeeDee, three slides to the cross-section, where it says line of protection 21.6, kind of between those two arrows, that is where the berm is. And so you can't, it, it's not something that you're seeing. It's, it's subtle, and it won't be distinguishable within the landscape.
Okay. So, and then, and then you talk about going higher than the city's plan. I think we'll need to understand how, what the connection is between, you know, how that, how does that work if you're, if it's a long scale?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that too, because our site, I think, is there, and there's a lot going on. So we'll take it step by step, but our site, like largely is just a connector, right? Like we are a very long, skinny, narrow site sitting between the 244 to 84 project, which was approved by the city and now by the state before our project. And now we are, have the Gillette site on the other side of us. So we are largely, you know, beholden to connect to what the approved plan is for our neighbor while then, you know, setting what's hopefully a good stage for what might come at Gillette, but also something that responds to the existing context. So all of that said, as it relates to the berm and what we've gleaned from our conversations with the resiliency team in the city is that entire scheme was conceived based on an existing condition. What was approved for 244 to 84 is similar to our project, different. It takes it, you know, a little bit further in terms of a grading approach. So what we, you know, kind of step one had to do was take their approved plan, look at where their elevations are and where the city would like us to continue. So again, we're hopefully setting a really good stage for what's to come on the other side of us. Connect to their elevations while coming back down to where Gillette is today, making it flexible for a future connection there. So there, there are sort of two, again, two different tracks. The city's berm plan is meant to be a backstop for an existing condition only. What we're responding to is approved future conditions. What we're responding to is approved future conditions. If that is clear, feel free to ask more questions if it's not.
And I would just, I would just add, I, we use the word berm here, like it's not a traditional berm where you would expect a, an abrupt hump, hump and down. The, and if you had gone on the civil plans, there's grading, it's very subtly going in many cases from uh, the existing, you know, you can see the harbor walk at eighteen six. We've been asked to keep it as gradual as possible for public access accessibility to get up to the twenty one six and down. So it's not like this abrupt berm that looks like an earthen form that wouldn't have a context in an urban realm in an open space. And, and so what it's really doing is it's tethering uh, across Binford to match the other proponents projects to the north. So it's not a traditional berm in the sense that it looks like a speed hump in the middle of a landscape. It's more integrated along pathways and you'll see long contours at the twenty one interval on the, the, the design plans. But we didn't call it necessarily a berm because it's more of a, a raising of grade to, to, to complete the berm to the north and allow the city to complete it to the south.
Yeah, and, and that's what it, that's what it feels like to me, uh, looking at this and listening to you. This feels like a grading plan, um, as we're getting into it.
And, and you know, we're going to work through all the, the, the stuff with the tunnel below. And, and so as the city develops, those FEMA consistent levy standard plans, we'll incorporate those below grade. And, and we, we have to do a careful balancing act of the materials so we don't put too much weight on the tunnel too. So to get back to it, I think we are asking for the plan to be approved. And we can certainly share those construction details on the, the core elements as they develop in concert with the regulatory agency below grade being the T. And as we work through the finer points of connectivity with the, the planning department. And I'm, I'm gonna try to not to hit the BPDA, but like the planning department. And we're trying to tether it really nicely in an urban realm. So it doesn't feel like disparate elements as you're walking up and down the, the channel. And we were also asked to bring the harbor walk as high as possible at eighteen six as opposed to where it's around sixteen. So again, subtle fills to get as much public access dry as long as possible while also connecting the future flood uh, barrier, so to speak. But it's just not going to look like a berm. It's not going to be like a curb stop in the middle of the landscape.
I think I, I certainly understand it better than I did. Um,
Thank you. Good questions too.
I think that um, sort of back to my original comment, when the whole thing is done, I, that makes a lot of sense to me. Having to do it piecemeal does raise the concern, some of the concerns, not all the concerns to EP raise, but about um, whether you're channeling floodwater. Um, so a couple of things I think would be helpful would be to show grades, your proposed grades on the property and just off the property. Like how is that assuming it's just you, how is that, what's that going to look like during that period of time uh, where it's there's some kind of a drop off, I guess, to the properties. Another question I wanted to raise, um, because you, and I think that's relevant to, again, and to if this is a sort of a, gonna be standing on its own for a while. Your argument was that there's no, that the land subject to coastal storm flowage has no function. And there is, you know, almost a hundred feet of, of grass there, which it looks like you're saying is not in the flood.
L S C S F.
But you didn't provide us with any grades there to show that. And it is in the FEMA flood map unless something
Yeah, no, we do have, so if you look at the resource area slide. Um, go, it's closer to this number five.
Slide, but I, I didn't see anything in the plans that showed me current conditions. So I could understand what the grades were.
Okay, um, I mean, it, we have our existing grading plan. And so everything that's above elevation ten. That, so uh, on this, this plan, it, it's shown on this blue line.
Yeah.
That's the elevation ten line. Um, so that is on our grading plan. So everything above that is not L S C S F and everything below that is.
I guess what I'm saying, and, and maybe I couldn't find it, but I really did look, um, was trying to see existing conditions. You said you'd done a recent survey that showed it was above base flood.
Right.
I, I couldn't find anything to, to verify that. And, and also I just want to understand because it is still in a flood zone. It is, I mean, that's the land subject to coastal storm flowage definition.
It, it's, and the map, it's on the G I S maybe for FEMA, but by elevation, which would show up in the gray on, as the background for the grading plan. There are portions where Stephanie was referencing that the ground surface is above the existing elevation sixteen point four six.
So if you could show the actual survey that you did with, with elevation points for that area, that I think that would certainly be helpful to me to understand.
Yeah, we, and, and it's, there's a bit of the background on the, the C three zero zero. It's in gray under the proposed conditions, but we'd be happy to annotate the plan.
Just it, it often plans have a lot on it and it's
Yeah.
hard to interpret. So a, a plan that is your existing conditions grades and nothing else would be super helpful.
Sure.
Another just question is you, in one place, um, you said that the site height ranges from nine point two to seventeen and another place it says nine point two to fifteen. And I partly, I'm just, either one, I was sort of shocked because it looked so flat. And I was wondering if you could explain how the how the site is, is it going up or down or up and down or?
Yeah, so it's going, so um, it is, it is low along the shoreline. That's where the lowest elevations are.
Okay.
Um, then it goes up to where Binford Park is. So within the blue lines here where it says that it's outside of land subject to coastal storm flowage. And then it slowly goes back down until it gets to A Street. Where it gets to.
Fifteen and change, Boston City Base.
Yeah. So I think in, in one case, um, what, I think what I mistakenly did was take the two sides of the site and say what the elevations were. But then at one point I also noted what the high elevation was within the area outside of L S C S F. So that's why they're the two different.
Okay.
Numbers, but it does go slightly up and then down.
Okay. And then, um, I, I don't know, and maybe this may be jumping ahead a step, but whether there might be some way in the permitting process to sort of coordinate your approval with sort of the, the whole project happening uh, at once as opposed to you on your own. I, that's something that maybe we can explore.
Yeah.
I'm, yeah, I'm happy to jump in there. I mean, the the current state of these projects, so fifteen neckos obviously built. Two forty four, two eighty four, right next to us is an approved project. Um, and they have, I believe, a pending NOI um, in front of the commission as well. Our project was approved under Article eighty in June or July. And there are, um, you know, certainly many tools in place and our teams have open and, you know, very productive communication with the ownership of the two forty four, two eighty four site. Um, so yeah, it's tricky. Unfortunately, they aren't one project.
Okay. So, so then I'll just say, for, the reason I still have a concern is, is the the potential of a, of a flow path. And, and I know you had said nine feet per second. I did sort of do some looking into that and I do have no expertise, but you know, that that's six miles an hour. And um, I, I saw in the, in your FEIR that you had done um, not just velocity, but extent and depth. And if you have that information, I think that would be very helpful to understand. Is it, is it a foot or two feet or two inches or like how much water is running down there?
If, let's see, um, Dee Dee, could you go past the thank you slide? And there are some reference slides. Um, and go to number, well, it's, let's see, keep going. Uh, next one, this one. Okay. So whoops, go one, one back. Thank you. So this is a summary of the flow path analysis that was done um, in the DEIR. And then um, some additional information was provided in the FEIR. So we were scoped to look at these five conditions. The first one is existing condition. Um, what you see today. Number two is a build with just fifteen Neco and two forty four, two through two forty eight A Street. Um, these are all in, in twenty seventy because this is the event that they wanted, uh, that MIPA wanted us to look at. There's number three where just two thirty two A street is built and the others aren't, which is very unlikely to happen since fifteen Neco is done and two forty four, two forty eight is already uh, on its way as well. Then we have scenario four, um, which is the three projects are built, but Gillette is not. And then scenario five is all, all of the products are built and the berm is complete.
All right.
Um, so we've assessed the, the impacts at the offsite locations. Um, and so today the velocity is about three feet per second. Um, and then the other scenarios range from four to nine. Um, by the time we build everything, there'll be no velocity because um, nothing will be overtopping the berm.
Got it.
Um.
So I, I just was asking if you did extent and depth.
Yep, yep, I'm getting there.
Add those columns. That would just be information.
Yes, so if, um, sure, it, it, it's a little tricky to, to do in a table, um, but we have images. If you could just forward uh, two slides ahead, please. We, we have a flow path analysis that's actually, um, these are, are screenshots of it that were figures that were submitted with the, with the MIPA plan. So, um, this is showing, we, we did inflow and outflow. This one is just showing these, this series is just showing in. Um, so this is the flow path analysis under existing conditions. And then you can see the depth on the right side. So we're looking at um, between two and three feet in this, in this scenario. Um, and this is twenty seventy. And then uh, the next one is the scenario number two, where we have um, two forty four and fifteen, uh, two forty four A Street and fifteen are built, but our project is not. And you can see how the depth of water from those projects would actually increase on our site up into the, um, the six foot. Oh, I'm sorry. These are, this is feet per second. This is not depth. Um, so, yeah, yeah.
Make you go do it all now. I just think that would be helpful and, and probably more the current conditions if, if if you've done that analysis that would tell us if, if it's you on your own or, or the different options. I don't think we need twenty seventy because we don't expect it, that to be an issue. But sort of what would it mean today if, if uh, under the different scenarios, what would we be talking about?
You just wanted to know existing uh, current, current climate conditions. Okay, yeah. I, I can pull that up for you and, and we can send that over. We, we do have that information.
I, I thank you for taking all these questions and the commissioners for letting me take so much time. Uh, but I think I'm done for now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And um, that explains a lot. Thank you. And you made them get into the reserved slides, which is an accomplishment. Because I just did not figure out, I couldn't figure out how, when you improved your property with, uh, with a berm light condition that you increased the velocities. Now I understand that. So thank you. Um, Commissioner Sullivan, what do you have?
Um, on the, on the stormwater, you're gonna collect the building stormwater in a tank and pump it into wells. Are those wells down by A Street or where, where are the wells going to be located?
Yes, those would be on uh, the A Street side and they actually wrap around a bit towards Binford, uh, and just due to the amount that we would need.
In the remaining property, are you infiltrating water that hits it? Or are you claiming it's impervious? So you're collecting extra flow and, and piping it out to the channel?
Uh, so due to the mass dot tunnel there, uh, we are not proposing to infiltrate on top of the tunnel. Uh, so the rest of the property, uh, we are increasing pervious area on it. And then any impervious area, we would need to send to um, water quality units uh, for T S S removal. And then it would, would be piped directly to the B W C drainage system and out to the um, four point channel.
Right, and that, that's a seventy two inch old brick conduit. Uh, do you know if it's pile supported? You're gonna put five feet of earth on top of it. Have you looked at the impacts on that conduit?
I, there's two conditions, uh, Commissioner Sullivan, where the, the pipe crosses the mass pike, it was replaced as part of the mass pike tunnel and it bears on the tunnel roof. And uh, as shown on the plans and as the commission has from basically the mass DOT right of way out to A Street will be replacing it with a brand new seventy two inch pipe.
So at the end of the day, there's no brick conduit from A Street to the channel.
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Yes, for me too, Howard. Yes.
So it's not, the two of you will go dig it up and put in some R C P.
It'll take us a long time, but we'll do it, Mr. Sullivan.
What a deal. The, uh, so with all this discussion of the berms and when and how and all that, um, how, if this project starts, how long does it take to you to get to the point where you say, I gotta put a berm in today because I gotta finish this project. Is this a four year project or is this a thirty six months or what, what's your timing on this?
Lauren, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, uh, we, so we've started our chapter ninety one license process, which we, you know, anticipate based on some recent precedent should take, say, nine months. Um, from their construction, including, you know, pretty considerable, um, enablement work that we'll be, be working with you on. Um, I would say it would take two years to construct, so best case scenario. We have a, a completed project in three years. And that's heavily dependent up on external market and economic factors as well. But best case is three years.
And you expect that um, the city will know an answer on this FEMA grant within three years and be able to do a design? I'm just curious. That's a forever uh, project. You know, we promised to build the berm. Um, if not, you guys will come up with your own design and come back and say this is what we're doing?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that, that's all I had. It's, it just seems unsure with there's so many moving parts here. Um, of course, we have till twenty seventy before the water gets up that high, so we'll see.
Yeah. I mean, but it's an interesting question. That's how I came into this um, hearing tonight is that um, that, you know, the building would be uh, permitted and um, we would probably need to see them back with a separate NOI for the berm. Uh, and I'm not sure, I'm not exactly sure where we're going to get to, but um,
What, can I just ask what was done for two forty four, two eighty four A Street? Since it is, it just, we're in the exact same boat. Um, we just have a much smaller site.
I don't remember even having this discussion. Um, well, I'm gonna be honest, I don't even remember hearing um, that project, um, but um, that's just because things start to merge after a while. But um, as far as I know, this is like first impression that we're talking about um, uh, building a berm over there and, and the sequencing of the berm. Um, Commissioner Herbst, do you remember any differently?
Immunity, yeah.
I don't remember. I, and I think it's, we, we should find out.
Yeah, I would, and I totally, I mean, you guys see a million projects and we're obviously in the weeds and live and breathe this four point channel, but that could hopefully be, you know, a helpful, um.
My, my recollection, my recollection is they were raising the grade high enough that the water couldn't come into the property, not using the word berm, not using
Right, so I think it's essentially the same thing. I, I guess we're getting caught up on the word berm.
So we're, we're in the same boat. We're, we're just taking this again, the step further to even be flagging what the city is planning with their own FEMA berm, which is again, this backstop and this external variable. It's not included in our NOI, it's not included in our site plan, it's not in our scope. What you see is in our scope and it's the exact same as two forty four, two eighty four in terms of a holistic grading plan. Um, to address this, you know, more head on in terms of this being um, climate change more head on than just slapping an, an earthen berm on an existing condition. Um, so if that, you know, hopefully clears things up, that's only why I want to draw the parallel because we are in the exact same boat as that project. And all we're looking to do is pick up on their approved elevations and continue that onto our site in a way that fits with the constraints of the tunnel underlying it.
Yep. And Lauren, to that point, I think I do remember uh, adding a special condition that um, that project would uh, comply or be consistent with or work in concert with uh, the climate ready Boston or the city's plans, uh,
Right, right.
For that area, which is something we would uh, want to add to this order of conditions. So thank you for jogging our memory. Um, Commissioner Linnae.
Hi, everyone. So um, I had a few questions related to planting, so maybe a little bit zoomed in, but um, can you, can you talk about the, do you know what the soil profile is um, in the planting areas, given that there's not um, I guess a lot of room to infiltrate, is there um, any under drain? Um, under drainage being considered? And then um, another question on trees, the ones that are in And then um, another question on trees, the ones that are in the paved area. Um, can you talk about the soils or the conditions that will um, ensure that those survive?
So unfortunately, we don't have our landscape architect here, um, but we did submit planting plans as part of this. And from my understanding, uh, all of the conditions are conducive to all of the proposed plants actually growing. Um, so we do have, you know, the planting schedule with all the species and the locations. Um, and also uh, the the types of scenarios that they'll be um, planted in. Um, they have different soil profiles listed as well, but that is not my area of expertise.
Yeah, and since we're doing a lot of filling, uh, that it allows for the the planting mix to be selected as opposed to dealing with what's there under native, which could be a little compacted post-big dig fill. Um, and so we've spent a lot of time with Mick Young Kim's team to 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 place the plantings where we we think they have the best chance of success and provide the shade and the still complement it, but the the plants have been carefully selected. And I, and I know we submit as part of the NOI, a plant planting plan to reflect not just the existing conditions, but future climate.
And then one small thing, I I noticed there was one street tree being removed, and I know it was a small tree, but uh, my understanding of the ordinance is that that would still require um, requesting permission to remove that from the tree warden, is that something that you included or have done?
We have not yet, we haven't, you know, as you know, parks typically likes to go last, so we have to seek all our other permits before we can go to them. I I know, you know this, so um, but we haven't initiated that removal. And uh, work in the extension of Benford Street might be done by others too, ahead of us, so uh, that that person would have to deal with that removal, because we're kind of showing work in the same zone, so. But we plan on doing so upon all the approvals that we need.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and uh, maybe Commissioner Wilson will get into this, but um, I do remember seeing something in the NOI about some of the plantings are uh, non-native species. Um, so we probably wanna know um, why that is the case, whether it's because salt tolerance or it's creeping, you know, zones are creeping up to our zones, we're looking at Pennsylvania now instead of um, this immediate area. Uh, but um, uh, I did notice that, and we have a strong preference for native species. Um, Commissioner Wilson? You might have more on this.
Yeah, no, sorry, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, um, but I appreciate you guys, this is like generations of planning students have been trained on this site with the hundred acre master plan, so this is the like keystone, basically, along here, and you guys also have the disadvantage of being encumbered with having public access lands as well. So I think that might be some of the difference between fifteen Echo and a two forty-four property. Um, is that your building is set back um, as opposed to, it's right up against the edge there. Um, I guess my main sort of thing was the of to 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 your point, Chair Parker and Commissioner Herbst, that neither of the other properties really made any claims about the performance of what they were doing with the landscape. It was just raising grade. Um, whereas now the city is pursuing or has received FEMA funding, and that's going to now be subject to FEMA standards, no doubt. And a claycore berm is a very different creature than, you know, three steps or something that we had a fifteen Echo and you know, some plantings with a staircase and another two forty-four. So I guess one of the questions is sort of if you are encumbered with creating a claycore berm, which its express purpose is to create hydrologically separation over top of the tunnel, like, have you guys done the engineering for that? Is that the city's engineering that you're waiting on, like? Where where is that? Because that's a very different subgrade condition than we've seen proposed elsewhere near here.
So uh, in terms of those analyses, once we seek and receive this approval, that'll set the stage for the grades. And then we work from the surface downwards to the tunnel roof, and it's a careful balancing act, so try, we cannot increase the load or, you know, the weight load on top of the tunnel. So where we have plants and the right planting soil, then we're gonna have to calculate that weight and offset it with either lightweight fills or foams or things of that nature, so it's a really detailed analysis, starts from the final picture of what the city wants to see at the surface. The impervious pervious composition, the trees, pavers, work your way down to the tunnel to offset those weights. And in the middle of that, there has to be some impermeable core, and that'll have an associated weight. But we we have a a kind of five-step process with the uh, mass DOT, where they're gonna undergo review at certain levels, and then we increase the analyses and it will be peer reviewed. So once we get through the more local approvals on on this type of matter, what the city wants to see at the surface, then we have to interface with the DOT. Anywhere in this zone for the projects laterally on top sideways, and it really comes down to weights. And the other important element is there is the emergency access headhouse in the middle of our site, which we're matching that grade, which is coincidentally right near twenty-one-five, so it works out for us to eliminate some steps. Um, and and we have to raise some stand pipes, so it's all very delicate detailed analyses that will will stagger up as we learn more what we wanna see on the surface and work our way down. But this type of approval that we're seeking tonight is really critical to initiate those steps.
And and functionally, in the end, it won't have any different impact on the resource area, regardless of what goes underneath. Like, we're looking at, this is, this is the elevation, you know, floodwaters will not be able to go over it through twenty seventy, so it it's having, you know, the same impact no matter what.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that, and this is, I am not an engineer, so I'm just well aware of my limits. I guess the one thing that makes me concerned is you do have sort of a heavy iceberg-shaped object as required typically by FEMA. If it's going to be meeting performance standards, regardless of whatever elevation it's at. And then you're trying to sort of offset that with alterations to the landscape. I mean, if somebody told me there was a tunnel underneath something and I needed to build elevation, the first thing I'd reach for is foam. So not clay, um, so.
Well, that's for the uh, core, the core might not be clay, it, I'm just using it as an example to to permit the transmissivity of water below grade, something has to be a barrier. So whether typically it's been bentonite clay and probably what you saw if you had read the city's filings, it could be more of an impermeable barrier, it just needs to lock the water on the the water side of the water and not the land side of the water, so. And and how that gets accomplished will come down to the detailed engineering, because it, you know, it's gonna be hard to to do fussy stuff, so i- if it's a bentonite berm, it'll be a bentonite berm, if not, it'll be something else.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, my my personal perspective is that without resolution on that, it would be hard to um, permit something that I really don't know what the subgrade condition is relative to what the landscape is you're trying to build on top of it, like, we wouldn't accept that if it was a street tree and a sidewalk. And then like, well, we don't really know what the soil volume is gonna be by the end of it, because that does determine sort of what the ultimate performance might be.
I I think the plan would be that should we deviate from what was submitted, we would obviously follow the protocol of, you know, coming back. If if we, it it might be that nothing substantially deviates from this.
Yeah. Okay, I'm I'll I'll think about it. Um, I guess in terms of just curious about the flow path thing, it's on screen here with um, what type of software did you, this is a little bit nerdy, but there is a point. Um, what type of software did you you guys use to do that? And I'm just curious, because we've seen other submissions probably using different software.
Sure, so I I'm stepping outside of my lane, but um, we did use the MCFRM as the basis for all of the inputs, and then we have a hydraulic and hydrologic model that I know our water resources folks, um, they they actually incorporate, you know, the precipitation-based flooding in addition to just what the MCFRM does, and then they're able to iteratively run the program um, with different uh, um, grading underneath to see where all the water goes. I don't know precisely, you know, what they use, I do know that it's partially um, I don't know if proprietary is the right word, but it is partially their their own, their own model of this.
We're using subparts of many models to create an overall model, and I think this is the same model you may have seen in like a Dorchester Bay City for that that analysis, where it can take the elements like a slosh model plus the rainfall input, so kit kits of parts to create an overall model, and
And same for some of downs.
Very dynamic model, you can see the flow paths and and as they simulate this, it's over time and and these flow paths do change, but this is a very representative screenshot at a at as it through the model condition. Because as the storms come up and the tides change, it does create a dynamic effect. So a single shot doesn't capture it.
Yeah, no, for sure, and I mean, obviously, I think I'm I'm sort of on maybe the same page as Commissioner Herbst, if I'm not misrepresenting, is that twenty seventy is far out in terms of scenario analysis, and I appreciate you guys did that, because that's important, and I wish more people did. Um, sort of like near-term current conditions, I mean, like six foot per second is real fast, even if you have six inches in menadation in terms of a life safety issue, in terms of like Boston Fire getting boats in and out or something like that.
Um, right, so one thing I do wanna point out is that we did the worst-case scenario so that we could see how bad it 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 would be, what were you know, this kind of flood to happen. Everything with lower sea level um, would be better than this, so this is the absolute worst. And what what we were endeavoring to show is that these are allowable velocities for the surfaces that they'd be crossing. Um, and that they wouldn't cause uh, damage to the built environment, um, you know, and this this is showing the locations where the this would occur, and keep in mind also that tide comes in, the tide goes out, that this isn't um, long-term conditions, it's not a river running at at this velocity for hours or days, you know, this is just at the at the peak of the tide, the the worst-case scenario.
Sure, yeah, no.
And the scenario where two forty-four, two eighty-four is built, and ours is.
Right, yeah, and if you, and if you were to go, yeah.
And actually, and the city also does not build the berm that they have put forth as the backstop for the balance of the channel.
Right, right, um, if, DeeDee, would you be able to advance just one more uh, or two more slides, actually? So this is the condition that DEP was concerned about, and you can see that one little spot in the corner where the velocities are high. This is the, really the only scenario that could potentially happen if, like Lauren said, for some reason BPDA never did their part, because all of these other three properties are doing their pieces, right? So this would be the only spot, that one little spot right there, where you would temporarily have that flood velocity, that would be occurring on pavement. Um, and like I said, it wouldn't expect to to uh, cause scour or erosion. So it's a really limited worst-case scenario, one one scenario in twenty seventy where that would be the case, otherwise, all of these um, velocities, as you can see here, are less than three feet per second, which is what is under existing conditions, what what you would see anyway.
Yeah, no, no, thank you guys for doing this analysis, I mean, I think that this is what some folks in the city who found themselves in interim construction conditions and have experienced. Um, so I'm glad that you guys are ahead of the curve on this. Um, there's a little bit of, I don't know how we would hear from the city, given that we nominally are in the city. Um, what they feel about this sort of midterm condition and the ambitious uh, schedule that they've set out for themselves. Um, I don't, you know, so I I think I kinda need a little bit more information on that in terms of the flood analysis, and then the other bit to uh, Chair Parker's comments, just to keep things moving along. I was just curious about the the non-native elements, I know that's some stuff, seed port before, probably there's some good lessons learned there. Um, I was just wondering if that's like a, you know, you're can, we're continuing the visual language of lace park elms down A Street versus, hey, no, lace park elms have outperformed, we've tried X, Y, and Z, they failed.
Sure, yeah, we can provide you with more details from landscape architect, definitely.
Okay, yeah, we've done that up at like Van Pier before, and that's always been very helpful, because then other proponents come along and um, can learn from all of your research, so.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Connor.
Thank you, Chair Parker, interesting project, and of course, I understand the challenges here, you're building on land that used to be water a few centuries ago, and uh, your water is not just coming from the channel, but likely from other directions as well, depending on how bad a situation we're talking about and how far into the future we're talking about. The ownership of this site goes all the way to the channel, correct?
Yes.
And what the planning department is planning, the berm is on land that the city does not own.
Correct.
And what you refer to as frustrating is not having that plan yet.
Correct, and just to be clear, the city's plan, it's not just on our site, it's for the site that's owned by Gillette, it's for the site two forty-four, two eighty-four, that's owned by Related, it's fifteen Echo, it's the full extent of the channel, we're just one tiny piece of it.
Which all of climate-ready Boston for South Boston is, you know, it's primarily on non-city property.
Right, I understand the city planning is for the city, your planning is for the property that's owned privately, and there's an intersection, I understand. So I don't know if Alice or someone can answer this question. We're talking about what the planning department is doing, and I wonder if the environment department is involved in that planning, given that this is an environmental topic.
Are you looking for um, Elena to answer?
No, not not, not your Commissioner Richmond, but Alice Brown.
Sorry, Connor, can you repeat the question?
We're, we're kinda wondering what the planning department is uh, planning for the berm, given that the berm crosses three or four sites here. And what, knowing about that berm and how that would influence what, how we see this project, is there a way to have the planning department come and present to us is what I started wondering about, but then I thought maybe the environment department is involved in that planning, given that this is an environmental topic, any light you can shed there?
Yes, um, as many of you may have seen in the news this week, we have a new actual coast uh, climate resilience team. Um, but there are still changes in terms of who will be working on which project, this has been entirely run by the planning department and not by the environmental the envi- the previous environment department, coastal resilience project management team, so um, I do think it's a legitimate request to ask the folks who've been leading the project to come and present on this and put this in context. Um, but it has not previously been led by the pre-existing environment department team.
Thank you, it's not been led, but is it involved?
Um, I will say historically, most of the regional planning, as you've experienced in East Boston, like you know, the climate-ready East Boston plan is led by the environment department, whereas project-specific design work has been led by the now planning department formerly known as the BPDA, operating as the former BRA.
Okay, thank you, hopefully, you know, we, at some point soon, we can hear more about this and be more enlightened about the larger picture, so that when the individual projects come in, we know where they belong, and uh, it'll just be a bit more helpful, thank you.
Indeed, Chris Osgood was um, hoping to come this evening, I don't think he was able to make it, but that had been the plan to address some of these questions, I think you guys have unearthed a whole other set of questions that um, we may need additional staff to join for.
Thank you. What's the design life of the project that we're talking about here?
So, the building itself, um, typically, it's assumed sixty years. Um, the flood elevations are selected based on the one percent annual chance event in twenty seventy based on fifty inches of sea level rise.
Thank you, so when the city started doing climate-ready planning and whatnot, I think maybe Thank you. So when the city started doing climate ready planning and whatnot, I think maybe that was ten years ago, even earlier, twenty seventy looked far away and definitely was over fifty years away. And it seemed like twenty seventy was the right target. Now we're in twenty twenty four. If we add the design life, we're in twenty eighty four, but we're only talking about twenty seventy. What the building will experience beyond that is is something we should be thinking about, strictly speaking. And how long we can keep twenty seventy as the target as we skip building buildings that last well beyond twenty seventy is a question for me.
So so one thing to keep in mind is that there's the modeling that is used to select fifty inches of of sea level rise. That condition and I I hate I might misspeak, but I think that the maximum I think that's like, there's a ninety five percent chance that that elevation will not be exceeded by twenty seventy. And so it's sort of like a there's there's a a range of probabilities. And so this same elevation has a slightly higher probability of happening by twenty one hundred. And then, you know, and then a higher probability of have of happening by, you know, twenty two hundred or whatever. And so this particular slice, there's only data for twenty seventy, but you can use the same information to talk about twenty one hundred, and it just would be, it would just be an event that has a slightly greater likelihood in that year, if that's helpful at all.
Yeah, that that does make sense. Thank you. I think, you know, the exceedance probability is something that keeps increasing for the same water level as we go.
Exactly. Right, right.
Yeah, I I get that.
I want to also clarify that there are at present, the city and the state can hold projects accountable for data that they have modeled. And so we've we've, as just like Stephanie said, we've been calling it twenty seventy as shorthand, but they are using the best available data for the standards that we have in place today. And so when new data comes out and the state and city adopt those as new standards, that will be that will be the the target that we ask developers and other proponents to build to.
Thank you, Alice. That's helpful. What we we as a regulatory body can hold people accountable for, but there's also people building buildings and their own accountability to people who will live there, people who will live around there. And I assume there's an interest in making sure the building will be fine throughout its design life. But I appreciate your point. I also heard, is there an assumption that four point channel will get some kind of protection like at its mouth, like where the courthouse is or something, or is there no such?
We we have not assumed that, but if if John Sullivan is successful, then we can assume that.
And we will be successful. Don't worry about it.
All right.
I'm surprised you didn't mention anything about that during your comments.
Yeah, I'm I'm careful. I'm waiting for the Army Corps to say it's a good idea.
So is the two forty four, two forty eight A elevation the same as the one you're planning?
They would have to speak to their own elevations.
Generally, we are the same and higher at certain points, but don't want to get into the weeds per Howard's point and speak on their behalf, but we are in no place lower.
I see. So that's helpful. I mean, it's a relative response, and I think that answers my question. What what's the filling material? You're going to be raising the land quite a bit. And what what is the filling material?
It's going to be a mix of lightweight fills, foams, traditional backfill materials and planting soils and then paver basis. So it's going to be a full palette again to be mindful of the weight over the tunnel where that portion exists. And and then once you get off the tunnel, a lot of it will be building with the two levels below grade.
And and how will you ensure the compactness of it? So it just kind of like doesn't wash away or get loose or let water through?
There'll be controlled compaction on the materials that that get tested as the material gets brought up in certain elevations and lifts. And there'll be compaction, but that will that level of compaction and how they compact it will be regulated by the DOT where it's over the tunnel. But usually you'll see a a compacting machine roll over it.
And it'll be different for whether it's over the tunnel or not.
That's correct.
Thank you. So the best case scenario for building this, I heard, is three years. What's the worst case scenario?
I suppose never.
That's an honest response. I appreciate that. I think a a long duration would be more relevant to the question that was asked about whether even to build this, you need the berm in place. And my last question here, as tide comes in and goes out, I think that's sort of like I think that point was made to say that whatever flooding happens, even at high velocity, it's kind of temporary. And it goes away with the tide. Is that right, though? Because what I see in East Boston, you know, definitely the the waterfront development has elevated the land and water when it comes over the elevation, it gets stuck on the other side. And if it is multiple tides and some storms last for multiple tides, and the first tide kind of saturates the whatever drainage capacity we have, and second one comes very quickly, and now we got flooding on the on the street, and the third one exacerbates the problem. Do you have any comments?
So that's where the FEMA's Dyke standards will come in. So it will have to meet the Army Corps and and FEMA's requirements for for dealing with overwash situations. I don't know if Howard, if you have any more detail on that.
I I don't know the particulars of the the parks that were created in East Boston. But you know, these surfaces will be graded in a way that they're meant to shed water and but yet be walkable. So, you know, pedestrian type of slopes, but yet still sloping to allow for drainage. So that if if any water came either from the back door or, you know, across, it would it would find its way to an inlet and then get drained away. So you know, all those surfaces have been pitched to to drain to avoid trapping water.
Rain on in both directions, though, right? Towards the channel and away from the channel.
Correct. Yep.
So when and when it's away from the channel, it goes into the neighborhood.
Oh, then it'll go into catch basins.
Let's see. Okay, great. Thank you. That's all, Chair Parker.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Richmond.
Uh, yeah, I don't want to. We've been going on this for a long time, and I would like to thank the proponents. It was a very well presented argument. I I have to say, though, that I am still with Commissioner Herbst on what these berms are like and what they're going to be made of and who's going to be responsible for making sure that that they work as they're supposed to be. And as I listened to what was said, you know, all I could think of was that old cliche that for purposes of this discussion, a cow shall be deemed a horse. You know, they're not berms. Somehow they're they're not what we think of as berms. They're something different. And I am still frankly with Commissioner Wilson not convinced that we have enough information at this point to to vote approval, completely understanding the goodwill of the proponents saying that they'll come back to us, you know, if things seem different or what. But I don't think we have enough information about something which seems essential to this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst, did you have any other reactions after hearing the rest of the discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Elena, has anybody raised their hand or emailed in? I do see a chat entry here. It's from Ken Fields, most earlier. The city has an easement along the Harbor Walk.
Other than that, though, we're not seeing any emails or hands raised.
Okay. Okay, so Stephanie, I know that you've been taking very good notes. And we've asked you for some additional information centering around the grading plan, current conditions, landscaping plan. Anything else that I missed here?
The you meant at the extent depth and velocity.
That's that's what I meant with the yes, sorry. More detailed. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that carries seven, nothing. Okay, thank you for the presentation. That was very interesting and look forward to the next one. Okay. Next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six two thousand two and Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero two five from Use Environmental Consulting on behalf of Sophia Snowplace for the proposed construction of a trailhead and park space located at twelve oh five to twelve fifteen Center Street in West Roxbury. Resource areas are vernal pool habitat, a twenty five foot waterfront area, one hundred foot buffered bank and missing on mine riverfront area. So who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening. Tom Hughes with Hughes Environmental Consulting. So I'm here on behalf of Sophia Snowplace. With me tonight, Patty Rogavine and and Nancy Loeb from from Sophia. Also, I've got Alison Goyer and Nicole Ganzer from the G two Collaborative, the Landscape Architects, and I also have Steve Sawyer, who is the civil engineer of record for the for the civil plans. So we we've been here before with phase one. Phase one was a strictly a restoration plan. That work has started. It's ongoing. And and we're kind of in, you know, getting the vegetation established phase of that portion of the project. So now we're now we're looking to this healing garden or restorative garden. The this is located on the site of a former gas station at at twelve twenty five Center Street. And it is for the purpose of creating a park-like space right at Center Street for the use by the public and for the residents at Sophia. It also adds a trailhead for what I call upper Allendale Woods. And that's that small trail loop that leaves the back of Sophia Snowplace. You you can connect to the main Allendale Trails, but you have to kind of bushwhack down the hill. It's not something that somebody who's not able bodied can do, but you can actually get to the main trail network. There is a way of getting to it, but but you would have to go through Spring House, and at present that's posted as no trespassing. So we are willing to to work with the city to try to convince Spring House to allow a connection through there. But at a minimum, this does provide for an accessible trail for folks to access that small network. And it also gives a great place for people who are less able to navigate the other parts of Allendale to get up and actually see the vernal pool and access the high points and look down on the the larger urban wild. It includes some seating, some areas that overlook the vernal pool. The trail will have a max five percent slope. There's some educational components that we've incorporated in signage about vernal pools associated with wildlife, et cetera. We've incorporated a ton of native plantings. The there will be a drop off area down by Center Street for folks to be dropped off. The primary purpose of that is the vans bringing folks down from Sophia Snowplace. But it also will be available for the public if they wish to drop somebody off there. And also there'll be some bike racks there so that I think we can accommodate up to six bicycles. So if somebody wanted to ride their bike to visit Allendale, they'd be able to do that as well. We maximized in our design pervious surfaces, and we've included some stormwater controls. We can go to the the next slide. Just for the record, this is the location. It's kind of it's a West Roxbury. It's more or less across the street from the Arboretum area. And it's right on Center Street. The Allendale Urban Wild is behind this site. And and portions of Sophia Snowplace are already under conservation restriction for the urban wild. Go to the next. This is the delineation. It was actually done as part of phase one, but it gives you a good view of where the vernal pool is. The the location of this site is actually on the other side of the brook from that location arrow. You can kind of see the scar of where the where the former gas station was. You can kind of see it's almost like a gravel surface. And that has now become a little bit more vegetated, but the vegetation is still sitting in a bed of of gravel and the and the former decommissioned gas station. We did also send in some information that we did confirm a McFail report that researched did find that when the station was decommissioned, the tanks were removed. If we can go to the next. So the flood map has been updated since our phase one permitting, but nothing has changed on the site. It's still in the ex zone. Still well above any flood. If we can go to the next. Here's a view from the south. Again, you can kind of see that scar from the former gas station. Sophia Snowplace is that building up in the right. The vernal pool is behind the site. And that area off to the left is owned by Faulkner. If we go to the next. It's just another view. It gives you that a really good view of that scar from the old gas station. I should note there are two curb cuts on on Center Street. Our project plan will narrow those, but we will maintain two curb cuts. We can go on to the next. When I think it's just more of the same, we can just skip. Go on to the next one. All right, so you can see an awful lot of lines here. We've got we have riverfront. We have wetlands, vernal pool. So what what you see are a plethora of lines. Those lines show the riverfront area. They show off of the riverfront area, a waterfront area. That's actually been labeled waterfront area two. Waterfront area one is actually drawn from the stream itself. Because if you read your definition of waterfront, it has to go from the banks of of an intermittent stream and from the riverfront area. So we have both. So essentially, the waterfront area extends from the bank of the intermittent stream out fifty feet. There's also waterfront area off the vernal pool. So we've drawn that essentially off the BBW flags, which are a few feet beyond the bank flag. So it's a conservative representation of the waterfront area for the vernal pool because the vernal pool meets the five thousand square foot definition of pond in the in the regulations as well. So we've we've updated that to include all of those resource areas. You can see there's also a hundred foot vernal pool habitat that extends from the vernal pool. The outlet of the vernal pool is an old dam. And beyond that, it is an intermittent stream that flows down into a pipe that runs under Center Street for a few hundred feet. So I think if we can go to the next one. So here's the civil plan. I think the the main purpose of showing this was the the red line is showing our limit of work. It also gives some indication on what we're doing for for some grading, and it also shows some stormwater details. I think what I'd like to do is if we can flip maybe to the next sheet, and then I'll have Steve Sawyer just give you a quick overview of the of the stormwater system and where we have pervious, where we have impervious surfaces. And then after that, I'm going to segue into the Landscape Architects to go over the general sort of programming of what we're proposing and the plant palette. And then at the end, I'll come back to address. We've got comments from Parks today, so I'd like to go through that. But before I hand it over to Steve, you can see down by Center Street, you can see the new entrance where we narrow it up, but we basically have the same curb cut. We come in. There's a place for you to pull in, and then for to pull out, there's a a drop off pad, so the van can actually drop people onto something that is solid. So people with wheelchairs or walkers have a solid area on which to kind of land themselves. And then that gives you access to a trail. The trail either goes at five percent in that kind of serpentine route, portions of that are elevated in order to maintain five percent grade and try to minimize the footprint on the ground. Then there's Uh, then there's that, a loop that is down at that lower flat area, that is more of a park-like feature. And there is a set of stairs off the back of that park-like feature that comes into the uh, the back cut on the trail going up for somebody who's impatient in taking the long way of the uh, of the trail. Um, I think the landscape architects can describe this a little bit more, but I just wanted to kind of give you that setting. Um, Steve, can you just quickly describe uh, the stormwater generated and, and how it's captured and, and treated? Yeah, sure. So overall, the site reduces the, actually increases the permeability, um, given the improvement of the segregated surface of the old gas station. Um, and then there was some, some other small uh, impervious areas. The only truly impervious area here is the concrete pad for the drop-off. The driveway itself, that small turn-off area, drop-off area, that's going to be constructed with permeable pavement, porous pavement. The paths themselves will be a granular material, compacted granular material. And then there's areas um, where it's elevated, it's going to be a decking, concrete decking with gaps. Um, joints where the water would flow between all of those uh, flow, flow through to permeable surface below. Um, one thing we did do, you'll notice in the low right, that green area in the low right-hand area. Basically that, what that is is rain garden, it um, it's sized to hold one inch, basically one inch of rain over the, not only the concrete surface, that concrete pad, but also the permeable uh, permeable drop-off area, even though there'll be very little generate, little, little stormwater generated from that. Um, it's fairly simple. Um, you know, this is a improvement to the site uh, in surface conditions, which obviously increases the permeability and reduces runoff from the property. Um, so to collect, actually to, I'm sorry, to collect the stormwater, you'll see on the, the detail on the just below the rain garden, there's a small, um, there's a permeable diaphragm stone trench that collects the stormwater and directs it to um, the rain garden. Um, it's a very shallow, everything's a very low-impact design, shallow system. Um, and uh, that's just a overview of the stormwater.
Right.
We can go to the next slide. Okay, so this um, this is the best graphic that I could, that I had available when I sent the PowerPoint. I've since sent the up, updated civil plans that gave the riverfront and waterfront areas onto it. I sent that minutes before the meeting, so uh, so we didn't have opportunity to put that slide in. This gives you the idea of where we are in reference to all of those uh, those lines and I can get into that more, I think during the Q and A, if that's, if that comes up, but um, what I'd like to do is I think we want to probably go to the next slide, but I think the next slide is a duplicate, we may want to skip another one after that and turn it over to Allison to talk about the programming.
Alright, so um, we worked closely with the, with Sophia Snow, with Patty and the board, and also we had um, a meeting with the residents to develop a plan that would um, allow them to access this site a lot better and we landed on doing a path that was closer to four percent grade. Um, so as you can see, kind of the serpentine path going down from the building to the flat area. Um, we did mock-ups to choose the material, so we ended up using or designing um, concrete planks to be used as an elevated boardwalk. So the part that is, it's a little hard to see in this. Um, most of the serpentine part is elevated, um, about one or two feet off of the ground. Um, so we designed it in a way so that it would be a steady slope down with a couple of resting areas to get to the flattish area at the bottom, which is the loop area. And that material will be a crushed stone, um, a stabilized crushed stone for accessibility. So um, planned south of the loop, we have the um, porous asphalt drop-off loop and we also have bike racks. So I think um, Tom and Stephen covered pretty well the different materials and the stormwater components. And my colleague Nicole will talk about the planting now.
Yeah, Allison, uh, if you want to look at the elevated section, I think the next slide is a better view of that.
Okay. Uh, yes, so you can see here with the, the circles are representing the different types of um, piling for the elevated boardwalk. So we are using a combination of helical piles and probably concrete piles. We are still working with um, our structural engineer to um, to produce plans for the structure of this boardwalk. But what we're showing here is what we've discussed with our structural engineer as pretty much the worst-case scenario for, in terms of footprint of the helical po, helical and concrete piles. So um, we will update the plans as we get into a finer grain of design, but this should be the maximum amount of um, piles needed for this uh, elevated portion. Um, next slide. Please. And my colleague Nicole will talk about the planting.
Good evening, commissioners, good evening team. So um, we are very excited to work on this site, particularly because it's a vernal pool and our plant palette tries to reflect that, so it is for the most part, native species or where we need a cultivar that is um, often not considered native, but we need it for pollination. We have a total of twenty-five new canopy and flowering trees and roughly two hundred and fifteen new shrubs. And those were selected, as mentioned, because they're native species, but most of the shrubs are also soil stabilizers because of their root system. And almost all of the trees and shrubs are pollinator-friendly and wildlife-friendly. Um, lastly, they've also been chosen for beauty because we have people coming through and we want them to enjoy this landscape. So there are flowering shrubs, shrubs that carry berries in the fall. Again, this is both for the wildlife, but also for the people to enjoy this landscape. Allison, if you want to add something to this?
Uh, no, that's great.
So I think if we can go to the next slide, Nicole, so you can talk about your, your sort of thinking and how you laid this out.
So basically, how the path is laid out, um, the flowering trees are the turning points and corner points. So as a, as a visual focal point uh, for attraction, they are also cho, placed to underplant existing canopy trees, um, which would happen in a natural environment with an understory tree. And the shrubs are placed side by side along the path in, in drifts, and again, it's to stabilize the soil, but also to give visual attraction along the path. And then what you can see is almost like a darker pattern, particularly in the serpentine. Those are ground covers, um, and they're also, they're native ground covers, it's wintergreen, black huckleberry, yellow root. And all three of them are known for stabilizing slope, which we think is important to hold uh, um, an upstream bank or rather like the, the bank down to the vernal pool. And any questions, obviously, please do ask.
Alright, so um, what I'd like to do is so, so I want to just briefly go through um, if it's okay with the commission, that the Parks comments. Um, there were some questions about, you know, details on the conservation restriction and our hope is that we can address this through some proposed conditions, um, similar to a project that I worked on that was more development-related. Um, but it's a condition that requires within so many days of the issuance of the order for us to work out an MOU with uh, Parks. And then we would go from there to develop the CR. There is a draft CR that was part of the CPA application. The entire property will be under that, but as you can see from the programming here, um, there's going to be different restrictions for different areas, so we've got to carve out how we do that. You know, there's the more park-like features and the drives are going to have to be maintained in one way, the operation and maintenance of the stormwater features will have to be incorporated. Um, and then we want to try to make sure that we preserve that vegetated area and that we preserve the things that protect the um, the, the habitat, the vernal pool habitat, as well as the areas near the stream, the waterfront area and um, and this project is about both doing restoration, but also creating a welcoming, welcoming park space that is kind of grounded in um, in an ecologically sensitive design and gives those with um, less mobility means than others, an ability to still enjoy the urban wild. Um, and uh, and so, so that was sort of his first comment. The second comment had to do with that portion where we go out over sort of the top of slope and that area is actually, this picture is of the area where that would occur. Um, there's an old abandoned stormwater basin at this end of the, the property. You can see the downfall pipe in the foreground right under the fence and then there is a stone apron over that area. Um, the area is still in the process of being further stabilized as part of the phase one, getting the vegetation established. Um, and the elevation of the, of the boardwalk uh, will basically be over an area that's a little bit more stable than the rest. Um, but we are committed to making sure that how that is installed is done in a manner that does not destabilize this area. It's not technically the bank, but it's a steep slope going down to the bank um, where this goes out and over. Um, so uh, so I wanted to just kind of point that out. And because it, that section is elevated on helical piles, um, the planks are spaced apart, we don't see this as destabilizing that area. We also think giving folks that vantage point to look out at the vernal pool with some educational signage is actually worthwhile. Um, the um, the, the other part of it is, as uh, Allison stated, we don't yet have the structural design and our intent when we do the structural design is to make sure that sensitive areas where there may be tree roots are, are, you know, we space those piles accordingly in places where they're not going to do any harm. And if we need to design them to be a less impactful support, um, it's possible that we might be able to convert one or two into um, you know, into some other type of uh, support where now we show concrete piles and we show helical. Um, there are diamond piers, which are very um, non-impactful, but they can only be used in certain structural scenarios, so we could look at that if that ends up being an issue, which gets to one of uh, one of Parks others uh, other comments there. And I did talk to Paul about these uh, late this afternoon. Um, and then uh, we recognize there's no formal access through Spring House, that was one of his comments. Um, we're committed to trying to work with Parks to try to, to talk to Spring House and see if we can get that. Um, but absent that, we still think there's significant value in that upper trail network and getting people in so they can see and appreciate the vernal pool and uh, and enjoy uh, what they can of Allendale Woods.
Um, on, on that one, um, and I don't know, for some reason, I always thought there was an affiliation between Spring House and Sophia Snow. Am I incorrect on that?
Um, I, I'll let Patty answer that for sure in a second. My understanding is they're just really good friends and they have a lot of residents that are really good friends, but I don't think they, I don't think they have a formal affiliation, but I think they've got an excellent relationship. But let's let Patty clarify that when I, once I'm done going through all of these ones. Um, uh, so I agree that restoration of disturbed areas is challenging long-term work and um, and we're actually in the, in the point of transitioning to a different landscape company to do a, a sort of a more robust job of getting on top of making sure phase one moves along in its stability and, and all of that and uh, I'm looking at setting up a meeting with that landscaper, with, with Paul and with Patty so that we can hit the ground running this fall to really get things going. The trees were removed, the plants were put in place, the seed was placed, uh, fabric was put down, but I'm just not seeing the seed pop the way I expected and I'm not seeing it as green as I expected and I think, you know, we want to, we want to fix that on the phase one part of things. Um, in terms of um, you know, reports being submitted, we're fine with that, we agree, I think that's already in your draft order. Um, and uh, and I think that's all fine. Um, and the next comment about um, needing maintenance and management. First of all, these areas are currently managed to some extent by, by their existing landscape contracts, so this is an area that Sophia does maintain. The maintenance will change. There'll likely be some cost implications, but we don't expect them to be significant once this is established. And the board and the management at Sophia are keenly aware when they get a grant and they build something, it has to be maintained. So we would envision that would also be part of that MOU worked out with Parks and with conservation so that we establish sort of the ground rules of what's going to make up the long-term CR. And uh, through both the MOU and through the conservation restriction itself. And then um, and then we anticipate that this will be managed for the long term by Sophia. And uh, and, and it's a good point, but we do think that our approach with the draft order and uh, with what we've proposed will work uh, to address that. Um, the, the elevated uh, walkway footing impacts critical root zones. Again, that's something when we do the final structural, we intend on um, making adjustments to those locations and to the design, so we do not have that impact. It's hard to do that until we have the final structural, so we do know the actual placement. Um, we've spaced these things, I forget, I think eight feet apart or something like that, not very far. Um, the structural indicated that it's likely they can span that spacing much further apart. Um, but they just have a lot of work to do to make that uh, that design uh, work, so um, we could incorporate a condition if the commission would like to address that issue in terms of submitting the final plan and, and some kind of assurance on how, or, or a description of how it's protective of those tree roots. Um, and then um, in terms of phasing, so phase one is in place. Um, it, it is still in process, it's the valid, the order is still valid and the work is still being done. The initial work was done, but it needs to, you know, we need to, to continue the follow-up to really get the vegetation established and to survive the uh, the proper number of growing seasons. Um, phase two is before you, phase three is largely out of your jurisdiction, there's a small component of phase three and if we could probably back up some slides to the landscape slides, I think that show that uh, little phase three area, if you can see uh, it, actually, I think you go back down. Um, I think phase three is that area that's kind of just up against the building there. And um, we've incorporated that into what we've shown you with the phase two permitting, only because that's the only area where phase three actually comes into um, jurisdiction. And it's, it's just associated with trying to improve the overall open space at Sophia Snow Place. Um, and uh, and ultimately, as I mentioned during the phase one permitting, um, Patty and the board are committed to taking these approaches of using native plants and being more sensitive about use of impervious materials. You know, really site-wide as they, as they do projects around the building, even when it's not jurisdictional and they um, they've really bought into trying to, to do things in an ecologically friendly way and an educational manner and in a way that's welcoming to the public. Um, so with that, if I could just have Patty answer that uh, Spring House Sophia relationship question. And then we will open it up to questions from the commission.
Thank you, Tom, very much. Um, and I wanted to add as well that the residents of Sophia Snow Place were really the instigators to this project in two thousand and eight when they worked with um, or the urban wild to begin the cleanup of the vernal pool and it's their legacy that we're protecting as well as this, this area and we really do value um, the seniors uh, uh, that are living within our, you know, within our four walls um, and their dedication to this effort and their excitement about this project. Um, Spring House and Sophia Snow Place are two separately incorporated not-for-profits. At one time, they were managed by the same management company, which is why there is a, there, there was a connection. They are currently managed by two separate companies, um, so that even that connection is no longer um, valid. But we do have a wonderful relationship with them, uh, and obviously we share um, quite a bit of um, of, of mission and focus and they're very excited as well about having access to this um, accessible pathway designed for seniors uh, for their enjoyment of the uh, urban wild, so thank you very much. And I should say as well, this is all the result of a grant from this community preservation uh, committee and the Community Preservation Act, and we're very proud to be able to to share that with the community at large in the Boston, greater Boston area. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Patty. Okay, um, so I just want to remind members of the public Okay, um, so I just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Or you could send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Tom, you talked about McFail doing a site assessment there. This isn't an MCP site, is it?
No, no, it was. But it was a former gas station. And after the gas station, there was a development proposal. And as part of all of that, and I believe as part of ultimately when that sort of hit a bunch of brick walls, Sophia stepped in and they didn't want to see a development go in there and they purchased this, knowing that it would have some value to them in the future for open space. And and they were a little bit visionary then, and I think that that it was a great move to to have this lot available for something like what we're proposing. So when they acquired it, there were some studies that had been done as part of that development project. And I think the McFail report that I referenced that I sent in was one where they they read through the record and read through some of the reports that had been done. And they just essentially summarized that, you know, that the decommissioning, you know, some documents associated with the decommissioning recorded the removal of those tanks. And it was one of the questions that that Boston staff had asked us is, you know, did we think there were still tanks present? And so we kind of looked for what we had. It wasn't, we did not hire McFail for, you know, during this process to do it. It's just a document they had it, you know, in their real estate records.
Okay, understood. Thank you. And then as far as the CPA grant, I do remember this project. It's a it's a great one. And congratulations, Patty. I am wondering, as far as the record keeping that you have to do for the CPA staff. I assume, or I thought that they needed a maintenance plan as well to make sure that the investment is maintained.
We we in the submission of the grant application, yes, we did address that. And and what I was able to show them was the amount of resources we now put into this area with respect to maintaining it as a, you know, a pleasant, you know, sort of having, it's not overgrown. It's it's not, you know, it's not left to disarray. So what we are basically making the argument is that while we understand this will be a little bit more, we'll have some structure to actually work with. We're looking to invest in a structure that has longevity, which is why we've we've done a lot of work on looking at the different materials. And we're, you know, we're, we have a keen eye to making sure that this is a viable and sustainable project. And we will be very happy to continue what the resources, putting the resources in that we've currently been extending. I mean, it's, like I said, it's it's a real important piece for our residents and other older adults. But it's, you know, we have every incentive to keep it updated and, you know, beautified, I guess, is the word I'm looking for. But but we will, in terms of the plan, it was more or less, it wasn't anything more specific than that. But if you'd like me to present that, you know, if you'd like me to put that together, I'd be happy to.
Based on your description, I don't think it's necessary. I was I was thinking if you had something more specific, it would be good to have that in our file, but we will paper this file enough, I believe. So but thank you for the offer.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to point out that was my intent in the MOU proposed condition was that that kind of maintenance documentation would be prepared as part of that whole developing the CR and getting all of that together because we've got to manage and maintain not just the vegetation, but the stormwater structures and the and the walkway and the park-like area and things like that. So I I was seeing that as sort of a natural evolution in that process. And certainly some language could be added to that condition. If you if the commission felt that incorporating sort of a landscape management plan into it would be a necessary component.
Yep, that's smart. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. Eleanor, did you have anything on this?
I didn't have anything beyond what has already come up. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and I actually, sorry, just want to note that I just uploaded the document that Tom mentioned to the commission folder, so the geo environmental review that was mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, the obviously the water here flows into a pipe, an inlet pipe that eventually makes its way to Bussy Brook. I couldn't really tell from all the plans what provisions are made for the eventual maintenance at the inlet. And first of all, who is going to maintain the inlet on a an annual basis for the trees, the leaves and everything else that gets stuck at the front? And then at some point in time, maintenance needs to be done on the pipe and you need to get it both ends. That being one end of the middle of the street and a manhole would be another. What landscape provisions being made for fairly heavy equipment to get into the mouth of that? Should you need to, to maintain of say a heavy log gets there or or quite a buildup, because we've seen down the other end, some dams built by beavers or some kind of critter that has to be removed in order for the flow of your water or else you get a lot of water in the back. So I was just curious, Tom, if you could address what you got for landscaping to get some equipment over there if need be, so people don't run over your rose bushes.
Yeah, I mean, I think so. So much of that area was actually planted up during phase one and phase two doesn't do a lot near there. If we can, maybe we can go back a couple of slides to maybe even the planting thing. So that we do have a few plantings in that area, but that area was also heavily planted. What we can do is we can, before we actually plant anything in that area, we can make sure that we've met with water and sewer staff with regards to, you know, making sure there's equipment access or making sure that, you know, whatever plants we put there are are going to be okay with being driven over. That's a good point. I think in terms of who's going to maintain it, we're certainly open to discussing, you know, the basic things like like we've done on other similar projects about, you know, if we see something that's really obstructing it, that that is too big for Sophia Snow Place to manage, then notifying you. I do think that some of the removal of some of the the trees that were taken out in phase one have probably lowered the likelihood of of major blockage. But that that pipe is even partially submerged as is at the, you know, it's not, it's not cleanly open because of just sediment buildup. And we're certainly not looking to dredge that. But to your point, we need to make sure you have access in there. And
Tom, if I could add, important point here is that Sophia Snow actually owns the property on both sides of the banks. So the other side of the bank closer to the Faulkner property is not going to be planted. So that will have full access to whatever we might need to do with respect to, you know, the that that waterfront and also underneath the bridge. So we've not developed that side. We've kept that as is. And that would be the place that we would be able to come in with any kind of heavy equipment and do whatever we need to do with respect to it. So that is Sophia Snow property right up the side, the other side of the waterway.
Okay, and and Mr. Chairman, I think a condition that could be added, something such as the applicant shall ensure that that there is a an a route accessible and acceptable to water and sewer operations and maintenance staff. She'll be coordinated with BWSC and then we can, it puts something like that in there. You know, as we did on that development project over on American Legion, I think it would be the kind of thing that we could certainly coordinate with operation and maintenance. Those people are are, you know, good, hardworking folks that are easy to work with and will tell us whether or not they can get their equipment where we think they can.
Okay, yeah, what I have so far is a root zone protection special condition, and then I'll add this one here. Okay.
Yeah, I know. I just, I just wanted to make sure that we don't normally maintain the inlets that come into the system. But when we hear that the hurricane come and we just drive them trucks up and pull stuff out. And I just want to make sure that we pre-plan it so we don't damage anything. You know, we we don't want to flood the city period, no matter who, what. And we have bigger equipment than you do, so.
Okay, I will note there's a significant elevation difference between the the top of the slopes leading down to the bank and ultimately the the stream there. That area, and then it would back into the Vernal Pool. That area can probably hold a significant amount of water before anything starts flooding. But it would be far better if the pipe was functional.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. And I forgot to mention, we would revive or resuscitate our language regarding an MOU and the CR in the special conditions here that we had in an earlier order for you. Okay, Commissioner Linnae?
Great. Thanks for the presentation. I think there's a lot of exciting things in this project for the public to enjoy. And I have a few, I think, first a few clarifying questions. So in the NOI sheet L 1.0 has a phasing plan. And that shows phase one is the footbridge. Is that phase one of this project? Or is that the phase one that you were talking about?
Yeah, so so the facing gets confusing. The real phase one was, the real phase one was you guys. It was your Urban Wild program. Then our phase one was taking where you guys stopped because the conservation restriction area stopped. And we did that area into the the Brook Outlet area, the stream outlet area from the Vernal Pool out to that pipe and removed invases, planted natives. And and in that project, we incorporated an improvement to the trailhead that you can see just in the upper right that leaves the back corner of the building. That stone dust path at present has a big dip in it and we were about to build that. But what we came up with was a a bridge, an elevated boardwalk, whatever you want to call it, essentially a constructed boardwalk that starts at grade, ends at grade and takes off the dips. So it's now an accessible route for these folks that go back and forth, visiting each other between Spring House and Sophia. So that was phase one. Phase two is everything else you see on this plan right now, except for, as I mentioned, that stuff off to the right up around the building is really phase three. And it's in the very outer buffer zone, very outer Vernal Pool habitat. And and that the phase three part is sort of a less defined thing. We're still sort of working our way through what phase three really is. Phase two, though, is this whole restorative garden and the main trail that takes you from Center Street all the way up. You know, at present, if you're walking down Center Street, you've got no clue there's an Urban Wild back there. This is going to make it much more obvious. The the other thing I do want to note is while the Vernal Pool habitat is defined by the ordinance, which for a typical Vernal Pool is 100 feet out in all directions. This Vernal Pool is a little more unique. I think the most valuable habitat for this Vernal Pool extends way more than 100 feet upstream within the stream channel and the valley that's created by the stream channel, as well as within this area that we've done phase one on. Because your typical critters, some will go up the hills, but generally they're going to run parallel to the contours and they're going to go, you know, along that stream corridor. So this one doesn't quite fit the mold of how the ordinance is written. If it was a flatter topography with a Vernal Pool in it, then 100 foot is kind of a better way to draw it. So while that phase three area may be in the outer part of the Vernal Pool habitat, it's not the most likely area for the critters to to frequent.
Great. So in terms of, I guess, staging and construction logistics, do you anticipate that parking area being used or?
Yeah, so so it would be the area right, you know, right, that flat area where the gas station used to be would be one area and the other area, because there's work kind of at the top of the hill as well, would be the end of the Sophia Snow Place parking area, like right off there. And and there is that old abandoned basin. And and the outlet pipe doesn't even have an inlet within the the basin anymore. So we could actually, until that area is graded off, we can actually use that almost as a temporary sedimentation basin.
Okay, and then another question on trees. So I certainly want to kind of echo Paul's comment about protecting existing trees. I think there's one that looks like it's sort of on the edge of the boardwalk.
Yeah, there is, and it's a real leaner. But but like I said, we can we can adapt once we, as we do our structural plan, we can make sure that we look exactly at where the tree, where the obvious sort of elevated root structure is associated with the tree and then have the the least impactful support, you know, both through placement, location and ultimately, you know, the type. If we have to go from a helical in a location or two to some of those diamond piers, those are essentially like driving rebar into the ground. They would do really no harm. You know, it just might be tough if they hit a root, they might have to spin it a little bit and then try again. And typically, most mature trees can withstand, not that they like it, but you know, up to, say, a quarter of their roots being impacted through excavation. We're talking about a square foot, you know, impact of a helical at at most. And if we carefully cite those, then we should be fine.
So one other clarification on the trees. So I think in some of the civil drawings, it looks like there are more existing trees. Were those removed as part of phase one?
So phase one removed an awful lot of trees. There were some big norways. There were some other invasive trees. I'm trying to remember all the species that were there, but there were, there were some significant trees removed and others that were topped. We didn't remove everything. We tried to leave some habitat in the form of top trees. And there were an awful lot of new trees that were planted, but there are saplings at this point. So if there's, and I believe the civil plans are probably based on the original survey that was done for phase one. So they may show trees that were actually part of phase one removal.
Gotcha. And then I think, again, just related to that, the kind of tree preservation, the grading, as much as that can avoid, you know, critical root zones. I think that will certainly help with preserving those trees.
Yep.
Let's see, I think might be it for me. Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, no, I don't have any further questions. Appreciate the thoroughness. And it took me a while on Google Street View to find when there was a gas station on site before, but it's a pretty magical transformation. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker. I'll pick up on the gas station comment. What are the remediation implications here, if any?
The and the McFail report that I think you now should have in your folder seems to indicate that during the life as a gas station, they did have, I think, at least one leaky tank event and they removed all the contaminated soil and they did the testing and they found, you know, things were fine and ultimately it was decommissioned and it was one of the, I think it was ExxonMobil decommissioned it. And and it was the corporate folks who did it. So they typically, when when it's the corporate folks decommissioning those stations, they're pretty thorough about making sure all the tanks are removed and there's no sign of contaminated soil. So there's no indication that there's any remnant contamination. And we also don't intend on doing any significant excavation there. You'll notice our rain garden, which would be the, you know, we are using pervious surfaces, but you know, and and that we are improving the pervious nature of the surface somewhat. But I don't think we're focusing any infiltration within the area of where the old tanks would have been. And the rain garden itself is down closer to Center Street and not really within the footprint of the old gas station.
Yeah, on that, Commissioner Condon, I'm actually looking at the letter and there's a bit of a nuance here. McFail did did state that should the site be redeveloped, that there's residual soil contamination or petroleum constituents, and I shouldn't say contamination, residual concentrations, whether there are rise to level of reported condition that you would call it contamination is not known at this point. And did recommend if there's excavation, then Uh, and uh, did recommend if there's excavation, then an LSP oversee it, but I think that um, the excavation that they're talking about would be something um, along the order of deeper than three feet. Um, and also uh, recommended that a uh, subslab uh, vapor ex- uh, extraction unit um, be um, incorporated at the site, but that would only be if a new building was constructed. So the type of work that's being done here, the ex- excavation is so shallow um, that it wouldn't trigger these requirements or the, at least the LSP oversight requirement. And secondly, um, there's no building, so there's no need for um, any other interventions here.
That's good to know, Chair Parker. Thank you. Should we note it though, because three feet isn't that deep? So should there be a note somewhere that's saying that if if there is any excavation at all, it should not be deeper than whatever the specification is that would trigger LSP oversight?
Yeah, their excavator will know that. Um, their excavator would not, um, when they go onto sites like this. Um, if they're going to be triggering MCP um, obligations, um, that that all gets handled within that regulatory um, regulatory scheme, uh, because the liability they would take on. So um, that'll all be taken care of.
Okay, so in other words, we don't need to be concerned about any of the ex- the contamination that flew flowed past the confines of the gas station.
Well, it's it's not saying that anything flowed past. There's no, there's no indication of groundwater contamination or any flows offsite. Uh, there
Groundwater or soil.
Excuse me, the soil is what they're focused on. And so that would be the soil that um, was at the depth of the tank.
I see. Okay, thank you. So um, I read about, you know, in Paul's comments, I read something about a steep space and and should there be like a rain event and that should lead to erosion, erosion or whatever it was. Is there any consideration given to avoiding erosion in the steep section of the bank?
Um, so the, so avoid, we're we're only going in the area of, and and I want to be careful. When I say bank in that context, we're not talking the regulatory bank. We're talking the steep slope. Um, there is a relatively steep slope that goes down at the top of the valley within which the stream channel is. And um, if we can actually go back one slide maybe, or two slides, one more. Um, so you can see uh, the very tip of that um, hairpin turn there at the top uh, on the left is over some tight contours. The rest of the elevated walkway is over uh, generally flat or or more gentle sloping areas. That very tip is the only thing that's going over the steep slope. The boards are spaced apart, so there won't be a concentration of water. Um, and that area is more or less in the same place that that picture I showed you of the stone apron is located. So that area is um, is sort of more stable than the rest, but we're not focusing any stormwater uh, or rainwater into that area. Uh, and water that drips through the planks will essentially sheet the way it currently sheets. Uh, you know, in that area and any stormwater really that's generated by the project uh, will be picked up in the in the system that Steve has designed and brought into that rain garden. But we don't envision that we're focusing any uh, stormwater on that slope and we don't see that the work we're doing will will result in that. Um, but also I think part of Paul's comments are generated in um, you know, looking at the current condition, which is sort of mid-process phase one, where we've removed all this vegetation and we put in a bunch of young vegetation and we put in some seed, but not all the seed is taken. So we've got some work to do to get that stabilization down. We will certainly take extra precautions as that area is installed to make sure that um, that we're not creating a a situation that will have, uh, you know, erosion or runoff.
So you're doing two things. One, you're not sending any stormwater in the direction of that steep slope. Two, you're putting in vegetation. It sounds like at this time it's pretty sparse, but you're going to focus on making sure that it is dense and it takes root so that the vegetation itself will prevent erosion.
Exactly. And if so, now if we go down a couple of slides to that um, one that shows all the plantings. And if you look at that hairpin, okay, down, uh, yeah, there. You look at that area, you can see we do have some some plantings where we start to merge into the phase one plantings. And we've got a lot of plantings around that hairpin turn so that w- we're not directing any water and we're actually going to be creating more friction with a lot of shrubs for the um, for any runoff that's headed towards the stream just over the the pervious uh, surface. So I don't think we're creating any issues for that slope. It certainly is an area we're sensitive to. Um, and and we're kind of limited in in how we get up the site and try to maintain a walkable slope in how we can get this to work with the grades and uh, and elevating it and going up and spacing the planks was the best way we could think of in sort of how to do that. And we really tried to stay off any steeper parts, even with the elevated portion, but that very tip just ends up uh, you know, getting out there a little bit.
Hmm, I see. So with time, we'll be able to see how it does.
Yeah, and and you know, the real, the only ground disturbance for that is really the insulation of the supports and in that area it's shown as helical. Um, and as I said, when we do the structural, you know, we're the, one of the first things I'm going to ask, is there a way of spanning so we don't have to put anything where the slope starts to drop off?
Thank you, Tom. Thanks, Chair Parker.
Okay, and uh, another thing actually sort of buried in this report, it's usually at the end, uh, is are the magic words that um, we like to hear is that um, they did a limited cleanup and then a risk characterization. And as a result of that, uh, condition of no significant risk exists at the site. And a permanent solution has been achieved, meaning it's been closed out. So um, this is, this site is
It's good to know.
Any other piece of, yeah, exactly. Okay, um, uh, just want to note that Commissioner Richmond uh, left the meeting at seven forty, so that leaves you, Commissioner Herbst.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to clarify that the reason you aren't pulling that back from the slope a little bit is is becau- is because of this need to have a the grade that you need. Is that why? Because it doesn't look like it would have to move very far. Um.
Yeah, the the problem is if we're trying to get a a four percent slope and and these guys did work an awful lot with the residents on on what accessible is to them. And five percent is the minimum for a trail standard. But four percent is certainly something that's much easier for these folks. Um, yeah, so so in order to do that, we either needed to sort of do a significant elevated walkway that in some places, as I understand, it would be up quite high, um, or or do the switchback and doing the switchback and getting it to fit without significantly changing topography and cutting into the grades and everything kind of forces us to do that.
Okay.
We do like the element of of bringing people to a vantage point where they can kind of safely look out over the vernal pool. So I think if we can pull this off in a way that that doesn't disturb that that grade down to the um, down to the water body and um, you know, provide folks who really don't have an easy way to see it to to, you know, they're coming from Center Street. We don't even know the vernal pool exists up to a vantage point to see it. And then maybe a little bit of educational reading for them and some pictures. Um, could be pretty nice.
All right. Well, it sounds like you're doing, uh, you know, you've taken things into account. Uh, no further questions from me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, looks like we have one raised hand. Uh, Frank O'Brien.
Yeah, hey, good evening, everybody. Frank O'Brien here. Um, a couple of comments and then a question. The question will follow up on Commissioner Herb's inquiry. Um, first of all, we're very familiar with the site. Uh, Sophia Snow is a, has been a wonderful neighbor over many years. Um, they understate the the significance of their acquisition. This site was endangered uh, for the, for a very inappropriate overdevelopment program. Um, interestingly, at the time, uh, the developer was so intent on building, he accused Paul Sutton of bringing salamanders and releasing them from his pocket into the vernal pool, um, which we didn't think was actually happening. Um, I'd be interested in comparing the CPA application with this proposal, just to make sure there's alignment there. And would definitely welcome visiting at the site to go over with Sophia Snow, kind of what's envisioned. Um, the question that I have has to do with, and if you could put the slide back up before that you had up there, I think it was forty nine, that would be helpful. Um, whether or not the project team and Sophia, yes, thank you, looked at the alternative of routing the pathway rather than into the resource area quite as much as it is in going to the right or to the north up into the border of the existing parking lot hardscape. And in that way, providing the four percent slope that may totally, totally makes sense. And if you could talk through, if you didn't evaluate that alternative, what the conclusions were and if not, if you could evaluate it some, you know, relatively inexpensive, quick way, that would really be reassuring to us. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start by giving a quick answer and then turn it over to Allison, but I also want to note that, you know, we we worked with uh, Steve Sawyer as the civil with the landscape architects and we really looked closely at how we could get up there. One of the key things about this uh, pathway and the healing garden is to provide a sense of of closeness to the areas we're trying to have them appreciate. Um, so there there's an element of if you bring them up there on a path to the parking lot, um, you know, some of these people are already coming down from Sophia and they're they're already there, but it doesn't, it doesn't provide that to folks who don't have another good way into Allendale to appreciate any of it. Um, but in terms of that, we did look at it. There there are some, is is I think you are probably familiar. There's kind of a big slope and we actually have to, you can see there's a little bit of a wall down um, at the right-hand side of the loop, just to get that loop trail to work. Um, we end up having to cut into that slope significantly off to the right if we're doing that or really switch over and switch back. So I don't think the grades work, but let me turn it over to Allison who looked at that as well. And if we need to, we can get input from Steve.
Um, yeah, I can chime in and say that we looked at dozens of different scenarios um, throughout a few months. And the grading, keeping it closer to the parking lot, isn't really viable without doing a lot of cut into the grade. So we tried to strike a balance of um, of like Tom said, having the residents and users be able to access the natural resource area here and working with the current grades in a way that um, will require less grading overall.
Great, thank you. Um, I don't see any other raised hands. Any emails, Eleanor?
Nothing beyond the one that we had already shared in the dry folder from Paul Sutton.
Okay, fantastic. Um, so with that, I would entertain a motion to uh, close the hearing and issue a court order of conditions with the following. Special conditions, one, that the applicant shall provide a root zone protection plan or narrative uh, prior to construction. Um, we do want to see the MOU that's going to give rise to the um, CR and also um, a landscaping plan, I believe that we asked for earlier. Was that it? Anybody else have anything?
Oh, and Chair Parker, I believe also ensuring that there is an acceptable route for Boston Water and Sewer Commission to maintain.
That's right. That's right. Actually, um, I think that that's the third condition. The landscaping plan may be uh, just a scribbled note next to it.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think the landscaping reference was uh, we, in the draft order before you, I think the MOU language is there. Would be if you wanted to add into that, that the overall long-term sort of operation and maintenance of the uh, of the healing garden area or whatever we want to call it, uh, is sort of one of the minimal things that needs to be included in that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so there's the motion. Anybody like to make it?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Linnae.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Condon.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six nothing. Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Yep. Okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for D file number zero zero six two thousand and Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero two three from Collins Engineering, Inc. On behalf of the Massport, uh, well, no, Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed repair of an existing deteriorated deck in parcel C two located at one Black Falcon Avenue in South Boston. Resource areas are designated uh, port area, land subject to coastal storm flourish, land under ocean and one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank. Who's here on behalf of uh, Massport?
Good evening, um, Madeline Swole, Environmental Manager for Massport, uh, also joined by Chet Myers and uh, Mary Orlando from Massport and Danielle Gudrow from Collins Engineering. And I will pass it off to Danielle uh, to tell you a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. Um, as Madeline said, I'm Danielle Gudrow. I'm a project manager with Collins Engineers, representing the applicant today, Massachusetts Port Authority. Um, the applicant actually leases the property from the city of Boston, so I do want to mention that going into it. Uh, we do have a file number for the project and prior to the meeting, I did coordinate with Eleanor about the conditions. So the project includes repairs to the existing deteriorated parcel C two deck, as you mentioned. And that's within a section of the parcel C two parking lot, and that's at the Flynn Cruise Port, just south of the Marine Industrial Park. These repairs are needed to retain the load capacity of the parking lot, which will allow continued use in support of cruise operations. If you could go to the next slide, please. So I'm sure a lot of you are already familiar with the cruise port, but the original facility was constructed in nineteen eighteen and has had various improvements throughout its life. The repairs being completed as part of this project are located directly west of the Flynn Cruise Port building. There's been some other repairs performed on this parcel in the past, and that's just to a- address ongoing deterioration. This project's being competed as a long-term solution to address those structural deficiencies and again, keep the lot operational and remove load restrictions. Uh, you may remember there was another project that was presented somewhat recently. Uh, there's other repairs being performed right now along the wharf, which is south of that cruise port building. And that's to address other structural issues with the deck, beams and just other infrastructure along the wharf. From the FEMA map, you can see that the project is within the flood zone, so we'll talk about those impacts to land subject to coastal storm flourish in a little bit. If you go to the next slide, please. Um, I do want to note that we did review sea level rise and resiliency as part of this project. Above is an excerpt from the Coastal Resilient Solutions for South Boston. You can see that our project is located in an area that's less vulnerable um, than the surrounding area, and it's about a third of a mile from the flood pathway located north of the Marine Park. Um, the scope of this project is really just limited to the structural repairs, again, to deteriorated infrastructure. And all of that is below the existing deck. Again, to preserve capacity and the design life of the terminal, but it could still allow for resiliency enhancements in the future. There aren't any critical buildings or structures on the site either. It only serves as a parking lot for the facility. Uh, Massport also does have a resiliency and sustainability guidelines, along with some flood-proofing guidelines that they use on their projects as well. If you could go to the next slide, please. So the layout of the structure below the deck is is somewhat confusing, as I think some of the um, commissioners who came to the site can attest to. But I'd like to look at the aerial first to show where the extents of that site really are. You can see the perimeter is shown in red on the aerial and that extends from the end of the pile-supported portion of the wharf where the cruise terminal is active. You can see it's kind of a delineation between uh, brown concrete color and the pavement in the parking lot. And then from the cruise port building, it extends west and you can actually see red paint in the parking lot, which denotes where that load restriction area starts. Um, again, it's it's load restricted because the deck is significantly deteriorated and that has impacted the structural integrity, which is really just the whole point of this project. Um, something that I'd also like to note is if you're looking at the plan or the aerial, um, immediately west of that red line is also a property owned by the city of Boston. That property was actually repaired the same way that we're proposing today. And the repairs that we're proposing, it's really just what has been And the repairs that we're proposing, it's really just what has been historically done for this area to address these issues. Um, if you can move on to the next slide, just remember where that aerial is, and yep, there we go. You can see the red line is really around the same area on this plan here. Um, you can see that it's landward of the pile-supported portion of the wharf. And the way I'd like to explain the structure is it's a pile-supported concrete pier walls. Those are full height from the mudline to the deck. And there's also beams that run west to east, and all of that supports the deck above it. Um, and you can also see there's some pyramid foundations there as well, but looking at the cross-section, you can see that the existing concrete seawall all the way over to the left. You move right, there's a couple rows of beams. That's all the operational wharf area that we're not touching right now. And then after that very last beam is parcel C two. Um, it's a little hard to see the text on here that delineates what these areas are. I have another cross-section later on. But really what I'm trying to show on here is that the repairs for parcel C two are actually about fifty feet away from the face of that seawall. If you could go to the next slide, please. Next, I'll show some photos of the site. Um, like I said before, the repairs are all located below the deck. Um, there's some access through manholes on the top side. You can see that in the photo on the right. And there's also access through access openings along the front of the concrete seawall, and that's along the length of the wharf. In the photo on the left, you can see a few of those access openings, and then behind that leads to that pile-supported area of the deck that has all of the beams. Um, I do want to note that the area below the deck is difficult to access, as you can see from the photos. Um, it's really only accessible for required maintenance. The maximum height from the mudline to the deck is about eight feet, but really that varies. If you go to the next slide, please. Um, so here's a few photos of the condition of the deck. Uh, you can see some exposed and corroded reinforcement. All of that white stuff too, hanging from the deck is an indicator of deterioration within the concrete itself. You can actually see some of the previous deck repairs in the photo on the left. Those have been completed over time. The last time those were done were in twenty fifteen. Um, those isolated repairs are really just considered short-term in order to keep the facility operational. But the deck itself has really continued to deteriorate over time and is past, past its useful life. If you go to the next slide, please. Here are some more pretty pictures of what it looks like under there, more of that white stuff. We call it efflorescence. And some of the previous deck repairs on the photo on the left, you can see the concrete also looks wet, which is just again, a sign, um, a sign of deterioration of the concrete itself, which has led to reduced capacity of the structure. If you can go to the next slide, please. So these are those pier walls that I was talking about that, um, are full height. They go from the mudline to the top of the deck. Uh, you can see it's a similar condition with the concrete itself. But you can also see that those pier walls are undermined, and the pier walls are pile-supported, so because they are undermined and the piles have been exposed, the piles themselves have actually also deteriorated to the point where they no longer support the pier wall in some locations. If you could go to the next slide, please. These are the concrete beams, and again, these run from pier wall to pier wall, so you have your full height pier walls, and we have these beams. Again, tiered concrete, you can see there's some spalls, there's some of that white stuff, you can see the reinforcement there. Um, similar condition for that as well. If you go to the next slide, please. So moving on to the proposed repairs to address all of these structural deficiencies, so you have your deck, your beams, your pier walls. Um, really what we're proposing here is removing that existing deck, removing the beams, adding a new concrete wall that runs east to west, and it's going to be constructed along the southern end of the site. Um, the wall is below the deck and it would basically encapsulate the site, which would then be filled with granular fill. Um, areas beneath the pier walls that you saw that were deteriorated and undermined, those would be filled with concrete and flowable fill before the fill is placed, just to make sure that there's no voids there. You can see that detail in the top-left photo. Um, and once the fill is placed all the way to the top, the top side will be restored in kind with new pavement. Uh, the site is designated, uh, is a designated port area, and it's within the land subject to coastal storm flowage. As we discussed, um, it's about eighty-eight hundred square feet of impacts there. There is ninety-four feet of coastal bank, and that's for that proposed concrete wall that runs along the southern extent of the site. Um, but again, the start of parcel C two is, is about fifty feet from the face of the seawall. And you can actually see the section that we looked at earlier on, on those slides, which really shows that area fill compared to the seawall itself, but it's cut off. Um, that's really all I have. That's a summary of the project, but I know it is a little confusing with the orientation, so we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you, Danielle. Um, my only comment on this is, and I'll go back and Madeline and Chet are probably sick of, um, listening to me talk about jurisdictional issues. Um, I'm glad to see that this was also filed under the Boston ordinance, but I would take issue with, or at least reserve judgment over whether that was done voluntarily or it is required, because this is actually city property. Um, but the fact that you filed under the ordinance, um, we can, we can table that discussion uh, until it comes up in a, um, I don't know, a more acute setting in the future. Um, with that, I don't have anything. Let me just remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat. The application, we have a Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Um, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. Um, Eleanor, did you have anything on this?
We did not have anything on this. Um, yeah, just noting that we were able to conduct a site visit for the project, and Danielle did a great job of explaining the project, given the weird orientation of it, so agreed that it's an interesting site, but that's all.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Uh, no questions, but it was a fairly in-depth discussion about a repair. I've seen other repairs come up saying we want to jack camera, concrete out, put some more back.
Yep. Yeah, agreed. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Linay?
Uh, nothing for me. Thanks.
Commissioner Wilson?
Bye, they're here, thank you.
Commissioner Condon?
Um, I'll ask a couple of questions, hopefully quick. Um, how well did the repair in the adjacent site work out?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Condon, could you, could you repeat that, please?
You know, how there was, there is an adjacent site that had similar issues and went through repair. How well is that working?
Oh, uh, we understand your comment. So, so the, um, the adjacent area uh, where we are doing work, uh, is proceeding fairly well right now. I think we're about twenty to thirty percent or perhaps closer to forty percent through construction. I, I don't know if Danielle mentioned this, but the, the facility, uh, the whole, this, this whole area used to be part of the original Boston Army Base. Uh, and it was constructed in nineteen eighteen, uh, which is one of the reasons why the parcel C two area is so old and degraded. Uh, fortunately, the area that we're working on in front of the cruise port is in much better condition and can be, uh, continued to be repaired and continued to be used. As a comparison, uh, the, um, the available load on the deck for the area south of the cruise port is approximately three hundred pounds per square foot. But the area in this parcel C two area is forty pounds per square foot the last time we assessed it, and it could be even lower at this point. Um, so that, that's why we're doing a bit more of a substantial, uh, we're taking more substantial strategy to address this area than, than we would the area that's closer to the water, because it just, even though it's closer to the water, it happens to be in better condition. I hope that answers your question.
Interesting, yeah, it does. Thank you. So what is the cause of the deterioration?
So, uh, most structures next to, uh, the ocean, or really any water bodies tend to have more accelerated degradation. Um, I think we're fortunate that, uh, the pile-supported deck area has lasted over a hundred years. Um, that's, that's really a substantial amount of time, uh, for any marine structure to last. And, uh, like we indicated, the section, uh, south of the cruise port is actually, uh, still going reasonably strong. I'm sure at some point we will have to approach the commission to do more substantial repairs, uh, perhaps, um, uh, replacements of certain sections, uh, but for right now, uh, the repairs are working for the area south of the cruise port. Um, but you know, a hundred years is, uh, it's a very long time.
So it's time and being close to water?
Uh, yes.
Does it have to be saltwater?
No, but saltwater does definitely accelerate corrosion, uh, which, uh, accelerates the degradation of concrete. If that makes sense.
And Danielle, what was the word efflorescence?
It's, it's that white stuff that comes out of the concrete, and that just indicates that the reinforcement within the concrete is starting to corrode. So it's a good indicator that the deck and the concrete itself is, is really compromised within, um, within the concrete itself.
Right, thank you. Does that spread?
I mean, it, the corrosion spreads. It's not like the, the white stuff is spreading, but the corrosion does spread. As soon as you, your facility does start corroding beneath the concrete, it does spread, and then it expands.
Let's see. So anything that's repaired, how do you keep it from being freshly corroded from an adjacent area that is corroded?
You really just try to nip out all the deteriorated concrete, which is pretty much what we're trying to do here, right? Um, that the entire deck is corroded. So in order to really address the deterioration and the structural deficiencies that we're seeing here, the whole deck needs to be removed.
But, but in other locations where we're doing repair work, Commissioner Condon, um, what we typically do is we, uh, saw cut the concrete uh, to an area that we believe is sound, uh, so we would remove the concrete around that area. Typically, you'd remove it back to the rebar reinforcing so that you could expose the corrosion, and then you would clean the rebar and usually, uh, cover it with an anti-corrosion, um, uh, like a paint or like a, you essentially treat it so that it has an anti-corrosive cover after you remove the, uh, the corrosion, and then you would recast the concrete back on top of it, and that's typically how those types of repairs go.
I see. Thank you. That's helpful. That's all, Chair Parker.
Commissioner Herbst?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any hands raised. Um, Eleanor, any, um, emails?
No emails and also not seeing anything in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, I entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions.
So moved.
Have a second?
Again.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Hi.
Commissioner Linay?
Hi.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Condon?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote either, carry six, nothing. Thank you. Um, next item on the, oh, you're welcome, sorry. Uh, next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from HDR, Inc. On behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed replacement of two existing nine hundred and fifty-foot crane rails and rail extension joints located at nine forty East First Street in South Boston. Who's here?
Good evening. Same, uh, same, same crew, um, different consultants. So we've got, uh, yeah, Madeline Sewell from Massport, Chet Myers and Mary Orlando on the call, and Mike Turgeon from HDR is gonna kick us off here.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. And, uh, as Manuel said, I'm Mike Turgeon from HDR. And, um, this is, uh, a request for determination of applicability to, uh, replace the crane rails at the, uh, Massport Colony Terminal, berth twelve. Uh, next slide, please. The project is, is located at nine forty East First Street in South Boston. Uh, the, you can see Castle Island on the map here, and then the project area is in red along the wharf. And, um, just south of the reserve channel. Um, next slide. So for jurisdictional areas, we have resource areas under the wharf. They are land under the ocean, which is in blue. Land subject to tidal action in green. And coast, coastal bank in, uh, light red. These areas are, are all under the wharf, and, um, I guess we can take a closer look at that on the next slide, but, and then, but, uh, but also onsite is, uh, designated port area. Land subject to coastal storm flowage and the one hundred foot buffers on the coastal bank. Next slide. So if you look at the, uh, the cross-section here. Along the top, you can see the two rail pockets. Uh, on the left is the se- seaward, uh, rail pocket and crane rail, for the crane rail. Uh, it's overland under the ocean, which is shown in blue along the bottom. The, the other rail pocket or where the crane rail is, is in the buffer zone to coastal bank, which is that light red area, uh, on the right-hand side. Near the top of the, uh, the riprap underneath the wharf. So all of the resource areas are under the wharf, and if you notice too, the the top of the deck slopes into the center of the deck, and there are drains along the center of the deck, which we'll see later on in the plan view. Next slide, please. So here's the FEMA map, and it's showing that the site is mapped in, um, in a flood zone. And so the site is within land subject to coastal storm flowage. Uh, next slide. So on this slide. Excuse me, um, so you can see the reserve channel at the top. Uh, and that the first crane rail runs, runs along the top, and then there's a match line on the far right, which connects to the lower left. Portion of the, the wharf. And, um, and so, so you get just, just one wharf along all in, in a horizontal configuration. The, uh, this, so the seaside crane rails along the top, and then next row down, in the middle between the two crane rails, you can see, uh, the squares which are depicting the, the drains. Each of those drains will be, uh, covered with, uh, geotextile fabric to prevent, uh, any materials from washing back into the ocean. Those, the landside rail is in the buffer zone, the coastal bank. And the, um, resource area designations under the wharf are shown with the light gray. Light gray dashed lines and called out for each resource area. Including land under the ocean, land subject to tidal action, and the coastal bank. And also over the whole wharf, you, you have land subject coastal storm flowage. And uh, designated port area. And then below the lowest, uh, below the landside crane rail pocket is buffer zone to coastal bank. Or it is, it is just within the hundred foot buffer zone to coastal bank. Any, uh, so next slide, please. So here you can see, uh, on the, this two linear features here. The one on the left is the rail pocket, and the one on the right is an expansion joint. This is the land, the landside rail pocket. And then inside the, um, inside the rail pocket is where the work will be done. It will include, well, before that work is done, we have the installation of the geotextile fabric at the drain inlet. Then they'll remove the filler, uh, remove the crane rail, any, any expansion joints, anchor bolts and pads and sole plates. Uh, they'll dispose of material that will not be reused, and then uh, install, uh, new pads, sole plates, rail, anchor bolts and expansion joints. And at the end, they'll, uh, refill the area with bituminous filler. Uh, if you can go back one slide, please. Uh, another one. One more. Oh, no. Where was it? Okay, go forward. I'm sorry. I had the impacts listed. It's the next one.
And the crane rail?
Yep, so, so here's the details. You basically end up with, hold on a second. It was on the, yeah, it was on the plan view. The seaside rail would end up with 1,383 square feet of land subject to coastal storm flowage, temporary impacts. The landside rail, you end up with 1,383 square feet of overlapping in temporary impacts to the buffers on the coastal bank and land subject to coastal storm flowage. And all impacts are in a designated port area and the designated and basically consistent with the use of the designated port area. I guess at this point I could ask if there are any questions.
Sure, great, thank you, Mike. I almost, I was thinking when you were showing the, one of your slides there and I showed the expansion joint. I almost made the comment, wow, you want to stay away from the expansion joints? And then I saw in the narrative that you're actually taking them out as well. And so this is just
Commissioner Parker, just for clarity, the commission, the expansion joints that, that are referred to in the submission are not that expansion joint.
Good, okay.
The crane rail is like a uniform rail that goes all the way down the length of the berth. And because it's a long piece of steel, that's like 1,000 feet long, you need expansion joints to keep it from cracking. So that just, it's just a section of the rail that, that is like cut like a, on an angle and it's sort of the two edges meet. That's what we mean by expansion joint, not that expansion joint of the deck. That's, that'd be much different.
And there are details of the, the expansion joints for, for the rail that are, are in the RDA package.
Understood, thank you, thank you for the clarification. I don't have anything, but before we go to commissioners, I just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat. The application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine, then star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. Eleanor, did you have anything on this?
Nothing beyond noting that we will, commission staff will likely be coming to the commission at the next hearing, asking for the ratification of an emergency certification to do a portion of the work that's within the scope of work that was described in this RDA. So that was something that we issued earlier this week for a portion of the rail that had broken and is, is, I believe work might be underway for that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Linnae?
Nothing for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing here either, thank you.
Commissioner Condon?
No questions here, Parker, thank you.
Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Okay, so with that, I don't see any hands raised, any emails or chat entries, Eleanor?
I'm not seeing anything either.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability with standard erosion control conditions. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linnae?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six nothing. Okay, thank you, Madeline.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, there's been a number of continuances, continued our notice of intent for DEP file number 0061961 and Boston file number 2023-051. DEP file number 0061996 and Boston file number 2024-021. And DEP file number 0061772 and Boston file number 2021-010. We'll now begin our regular meeting. First item is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061774 and Boston file number 2021-012 for the demolition of a residential building and construction of a new multifamily residential building located at 839 Saratoga Street in East Boston. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. And I'm remembering this for about the last dozen hearings. So what we have is an update.
Unfortunately, no update. It'll be on for the next one, but on, we, yeah, we haven't heard anything back from the applicant. And I do also just want to note that I, I think one of the reasons that it's taking a little bit longer is that the big issue was some debris around the project site and some plantings that we're missing. So understandable that the plantings might take a little bit longer to take hold before they come back to us. But as of right now, no updates.
Okay, thank you. So let's go into administrative updates. What do you have for us there?
For administrative updates, we have uploaded the most recent reports that we received for the Willett Street restoration work that was done. This was in response to the latest modified enforcement order requiring the property owner to implement the approved restoration plan. Those are in the drive for the commission's review. And if anybody has questions regarding the reports, I'm happy to check back in with the team and get answers to those questions. Or if, if questions come up after the hearing, please just email me and, and I can get answers to those questions for you.
Okay, and I seem to remember I had to recuse myself from this matter because of some nasty litigation that was going on. So I don't know, if anybody has any questions, I'm not going to participate. Commissioner Herbst?
I just, I had a, just a question or something that I was hoping staff could check up on, which is, I mean, that all seemed fine, but there was one recommendation to do treating of a regrowth of knotweed and that it should happen, I think in late July. So I was just hoping staff could confirm or maybe you know already, but I just wanted to make sure that that actually happened.
Well, we will confirm that. I, I don't know, but I will check on that and get back to you.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else, Eleanor?
That was it for administrative updates.
Okay, I did review the July 10th meeting minutes. I didn't review July 24th. Are they ready to go?
They're ready as well. And, and our commissioner Herbst, I apologize, I should have shared those out with you once we had prepared them, but I can do that ahead of the next hearing.
Okay.
Did I just hear Commissioner Sullivan Young?
Somebody did.
Wow.
You talking about me?
No, not at all.
Wrong guy, what I am in my nice comfortable sleeping.
You're in the lazy boy, I know. I'd be, I'd be sleeping too, if I was in a comfortable chair. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from July 10th, 2024.
So moved.
We have a second. Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linnae?
I wasn't at that meeting, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So just, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Well, aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries five to zero with one abstention. Okay, best motion of the evening, motion to adjourn by acclamation, any objections? Okay, I'll go home. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Good night, Eleanor.
Have a good night.